What are you saying? Okay, all right, why don't we call the meeting to order? Chief Gromash, I understand you've got something else you need to be, so why don't you go ahead.
Yeah, training now started, starting right now, so.
I've been working for the last half hour to get the black out from under my nails. Black mulch.
All right, so my apologies for missing the last meeting, I was tied up in the neighboring town, well, not really neighboring, in Hopkinton. We get called for a lot of brush fire there for a while, so. A hundred thirty emergency incidents today, noteworthy incidents in the last two months, I'm not going to bore you with details, but the, we had a brush fire in Baptist Hill, a couple acres burnt there in the middle of the day, we had a good monthly agency response, started helping out and getting through a couple houses and. Happened with a road rollover in the evening, right, upon a pet's house. That was, that was well responded to. Scales Road brush fire, probably Ferb and I weren't in the station, didn't get out as quick as we did. Probably a hell of a minute delay, would have burnt the house and a lot of propane tanks, so we got off pretty quickly. It was spreading, it was a really, really windy deal, the same day as the Hopkinton fire, it was a high fire danger. We were pretty fortunate to be able to hold on, was pretty happy. That's the one on Scales, and then later that day with the Hopkinton fire, we spent four hours there, they burned six acres, that's the day of the last meeting. I didn't get back here, we got, we got phoned up there around three, I got back here around seven. They were thankful for our help. On four twenty seven, we had that large truck crash with the, with the wood chipper on ninety-three south, I was, I happened to go to that one along with four or five other members of our department. The extrication that we did, just, just Canterbury, the kind of all that draws a light was absolutely, in my forty-two years, is probably one of the top five pretty impressive extrications, it was really pinned in there.
Do you know how the, I'm sorry, did you know the, the gentleman that you extricated, can you say, or do you know how we circuit these?
Ah, he was, he was, he was in critical condition, he had major injuries, internal, external injuries. The doctor said if we get him to the hospital as quick as he did, as we did, the extraction took about twenty, twenty-five minutes, so. From the time he hit the tree to the time he hit the hos- I think at the hospital was under an hour, and we kept that goal an hour, but if it was delayed anymore, it might have been a different story, so last time I knew it was in critical condition, so.
Okay, thank you.
So that was pretty impressive, and then Loudon Fire a couple weeks ago, oh, actually not last week, we had, we sent two fire agents there, they were there most of the night, helping them with that big firehouse, so. Yeah, so that was the, the incident, so last time I met here, and dealing with an incident in Newbury and McCabry, we had Belmont respond with us on one call. I met with the staff a couple of times, we've been going back and forth, I got some documentation from Chief Karati, and we do everything, and I just met with the Belmont chief again today. Let me just say we, when I say we, Belmont and, and Canterbury EMS need to be better. And so, and it was mainly the actions of the Belmont people, but they, when they're in town, they basically work on our tool, what you want me, so. We reviewed everything, returning the page, we're gonna use it as a learning experience and move forward, so. Under Fire Prevention, Shaker Village, we're going there early June to do a water drill, the, the new director here has been very helpful, communicating with us, and she'll be with us that day. Regular drills and emergency drills at the elementary school. Two weeks ago, we had Dartmouth, Dartmouth flies a helicopter upon request, it's called Dart, H A R T, they were, they did a presentation on our station two weeks ago, in case we ever need them. They had the helicopter on the way here for a touch and, touch and show, touch and show, whatever it is, and they get diverted to a serious accident, so. It was about ten of themselves with a helicopter and never landed on the front ramp. And then, that following night, I had a meeting, and it basically a show and tell with the Armory National Guard, with a Black Hawk helicopter, with all the rest of the White Mountains, and. We could use them for water drops, we could use them, you know, anytime we have something remote, so it was, that was a really good learning experience. Pancake Breakfast, well, thank you all for your support. One member recently completed paramedic training, so now we have three paramedics on our roster. One member separated from service, and I'm going to partake next month on a recruitment drive. Somebody that's on the beginning of the profession, or somebody that's heavy EMS training or fire training, we're putting something in the newsletter. It's time to stop bringing this in, I'm kind of concerned a little bit with, you know, our roster, we're down close to twenty now, for half of those being active, so. A little bit concerned there, so, we're gonna do a little bit of recruitment drive. We're recognized by the Fire Marshal's office this month for our interest reports, National Fire Incident Reporting System reports, and the, and the accuracy of ours, we scored a hundred percent. And it was on two thousand, all two thousand twenty-four reports, so, I got my start from Fire Marshal. Last week I went to a conference with Unitile, the electrical system, they, they serve half of our town, went to a conference with them, and basically. They give me access on, on storm and major orders to a portal where only the emergency managers of each district, each community can have access, and. So they have to meet those people, talk hands in hand, talk with them, and, and learn how to, you know, navigate that portal in the future, so that was a good conference. Fire permits are required for all outside burning, if it's not raining. Pickard Road Hydro Project, I funded it last year, but it's going in in the next month. And a, and a new reporting platform in the fall of two thousand twenty-five, we're going into national reporting fire reports.
You have been busy.
Very, very.
Yeah.
So, and we'll be going down the river in the next couple of weeks to put out the, the life-saving devices, the life rings and the signs and all that stuff.
Do we still have the warnings out for, I mean, they used to ping on my phone all the time that the weather's getting warmer, but the water's still really cold, so be careful, do we have? Can't remember, do we have signs that go up to that?
No, we just have signs, before my tenure here, we had three drawings and.
Yeah, yeah.
Chief Karati at the time, you know, was there idea to get the signs, because people called nine one one, and people were, were in water and went under, but they didn't know where they were.
Oh, okay.
So, so delayed the response, so it's glad you were here, so, yeah, yeah, so we take those down every winter when the ice comes to save them, and put them back up in the spring. Basically in the four beaches that people.
If you want to, I'm still collecting news with the June newsletter, you sent it, okay, I have to look through that.
Yeah, yeah, that's my recruitment drive.
Okay, but if you want to put in about the, the fire rings too, I mean, the, the life-saving rings down at the beaches, I'll make sure people see that.
Okay, I, so that's the June edition, you know.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Karati, good evening.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Since April twenty-first, we've had eleven incidents, and one accident, which was one, one half of Pearl. A hundred and four citations, four hundred and eighteen calls for service, four calls were assisted by state police, and forty-eight hours of miscellaneous training. On May fourteenth, all officers went to Loudon Police Department for a training on mutual aid and pursuit. Officer Westgate concluded his training as a lead instructor, which is the school for law enforcement against drugs. Apparently that went well, because they're now trying to get him to be a instructor for lead, which he did, one in the state. A lot of logistics to work out with that, because they would need to stay in for one week, twice a year, to get some paralysis.
And you said that's Officer Westgate?
Yes. Upcoming events, we've got the CDS parade on Friday, and then the Town Hall Parade on Monday.
That's all we've heard?
Just because it's, I can't listen and write at the same time sometimes, so Officer Westgate, they wanted him to, he did so well this training, they want him to.
They wanted him to be an instructor for other police officers.
Questions for me?
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. You too.
This elimination, I guess, that's me.
It's all you.
Team, team one is back, the engine seems to be firing.
Excellent.
So we're gonna send the five fifty, there's your ponies Wednesday, lack of brakes. The grader was down for a week.
Yeah, what did it turn out to be?
A quarter inch now. Floating around in the fuse box.
So it shorted something out?
It was letting its presence be known. Took him two days to find it.
Okay.
Back though, was down. That was a wiring issue also, that was an easy fix. Other than that, grading, ditching, keeping busy, mother nature's keeping us busy. Cluck Pond was closed for a day and a half, we lost the pipe there. Oh man, Briar Bush has been underwater most of the month, and it is currently dry.
Yeah, feels like the town is underwater, so, it's wet.
Well, and there's a lot of places where you can see the water, it just dug these gullies along the sidewalk.
Yeah, there's beavers.
No, the, like, you can see where it, no, this is not beavers, I don't think.
Yeah, no, but Briar Bush is beavers.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
The logging didn't have anything to do with the culverts, are they down there? I think they were hauling.
Yeah, they made it pretty muddy.
Had the new culvert at Harmony Lane, it's holding up with all this, no, no reports of anything wrong, right, so.
No, I replied, it's still there.
Yeah, good.
All right, questions for me?
So I ran into a couple of people from Cluck Pond, they were very happy you got that fixed so fast, so thank you.
Okay.
If they didn't say it, they meant it.
Thanks, Jane.
We'll be disappearing for a bit on Thursday, there's a show with the Sunup.
Gotcha, okay.
See now it's gonna be raining.
So we say.
Sam will not be here, we have.
Yeah, I saw him in our.
He has sent, sent out a deed today for, for one property. So he's expecting the bank to call him, once, once they get the. He has talked to the owner, they're aware, but he did send, you know, graffiti on the side, so. Other than that. The greens have gone out, so, the others. Plan is to have the tax rolls out, we should have a warrant pending soon for your signatures.
We don't have one tonight?
Uh, yeah.
It's the big one.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, it's good.
As soon as that's done, Sam is gonna start processing, and be ready to send the tax rolls out.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
And Rachel.
I heard Rachel.
Has a conflict, she's at the board trustees meeting, she did mention that she's working on a grant for the heating systems replacement. So she's continuing on that. And the work at the, the insulation got done, and we sent all the paperwork in for that grant, and we're waiting that check. I talked to the guy from Unitile, and he said we should get a check in the next few weeks.
Okay.
It's straight around seven thousand dollars.
Perfect, they're very happy that the work was done so quickly and so well. There was one black footprint on the sidewalk, and that was the, otherwise they cleaned up.
Not bad.
But it's one, one boot print, but other than that, they were very pleased.
All right. Ken, where do you think?
Mister Davis is here.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, come on, come on up.
Is it all right if I stand in your way?
That's up to you.
I've been sitting all afternoon.
By all means, sit there.
This holder should be in there.
Yeah, got it.
That on the front cover has a timeline, some notes on it, in the assessor.
Yeah.
Do we need to, no, we've talked about all this, so.
Yeah.
There's just a.
Go ahead, I won't take much, you guys.
Yeah, go ahead, I appreciate it, thank you for just giving me a few minutes of your time this evening, you guys. This is all kind of new to me, a few years ago, I took over that Buella camp there on the road there.
Sugar Road, yeah.
Basically, to make a long story short, the reason I came here, you know, we've been a nonprofit organization, at least for quite a few many years. And the last four to five years, the camp hasn't been used as much, because when I came there and took it over, it was basically, needs a lot of upgrades. It needs a lot of things going on. This was all new to me, when I, shortly after I got there, we had two of our board members pass away. They knew a lot of the history of things on the property, I tried to hurry up and learn all I could about my responsibilities as the so-called president, you know. And once again, my name is Nathan Davis, I'm from Manchester, New Hampshire, and they voted me in, there was a small board at that time, two of them passed away, there was a third one that actually passed. So, one of the reasons why we, we, when we got the tax bill, I was totally just, I didn't know, I thought we were nonprofit, I wasn't sure what was going on, so I was trying to gather any funds that the camp had. And I can just tell you, I didn't show you guys the base statements, there's, there's not a lot going on, ever since COVID, most of the church families that were coming, it just dropped off completely. It's happened to a lot of organizations, you know, I'm a working man, I figured I could pay it, but I myself personally was gonna come out of my pocket to pay that bill, and we want to make it, you know, right with the town. I'll do all I can to make it happen, I'm just asking for you guys to just give me a little time to get together with some other pastors that do fellowship at the camp, and we're gonna put together what we can. If I gotta pay late fees or whatever, we're willing to do that, and what I need you guys to do is just basically, kind of educate me on, because I, the two, the two gentlemen are secretary, and then the vice president. Well, the vice president dropped right out, there was just issues amongst people, I don't have to tell you guys, I mean, you probably see it through the years, you know, there's just people that just can't work together. And it's unfortunate, so, I've been trying to be a peacemaker, trying to learn about this, it's a small camp, there's, there's not a very large budget at all, at all, so when we got the tax bill, I was like, oh, boy. So, I was gonna take it on myself, personally, you know what I mean, because I don't want the camp having any tax debt at all. So this will actually come out of my own pocket, I'm, I'm a small business owner here in New Hampshire, I've got thirty years of experience in technical tree service around homes, power lines, we've got cranes, bucket trucks, all that, so. I'm a hard-working man, I'll pay my bill to this, you know, we'll pay it, I'm just trying to get a little help from some of the, the members of the camp, so. If you guys would be willing to just kind of walk me through this, appreciate the patience you've already had. If we had the money at the camp, let's just put it this way, in a nice way to the camp, we would have already paid the tax bill. But there's no money for the camp, ever since we've lost, ever since COVID, the finances and our budget, it's not there. So I've been left with three dead board members, trying to replace board members that are, people that are willing to work with me, and just keep it going, you know what I mean? Because there are a lot of families that want to come up throughout the year and enjoy the grounds, we love it up there. But then when I started seeing all the upgrades, like lamps and, you know, just, I started bringing in all types of material, to do small upgrades and get some volunteers that could help us get it. To where it's safe, the way it needs to be, and it's been neglected, so I kind of inherited something, and, you know, a little more than I anticipated, you know what I mean? So, so there's a lot that I did not know that needed to be done, and so, with your guys' help, if you're willing to, you know, just educate me in the areas of what I'm required to do, what I gotta do to make it right. And thank you guys for your time this evening, if you have any specific questions, I'm willing to do my best to answer them, or if I don't have the information you need, I can, I can try to get it for you. I'm doing my best to try and keep it going, to be honest with you, there's been times where I've, I've just said, you know what, I'm a pastor in Manchester, I'm a business owner, and I've got six children. That alone keeps me busy, along with the camp up here, and the financial burden now that, that's been put on me, because I've been voted into this position. I've been tempted to just say, you know what, let somebody else deal with this, you know, because there's a lot of work that needs to be done in terms of carpentry work and all that. But the good thing is, we've had some volunteers that have donated supplies, we've got different churches from Maine and New Hampshire that are willing to come together and do it. But the biggest thing is, for me, is I want to do what I can do with you guys to get on some type of schedule where we can dissolve the tax issue, and that's, that's where I'm at. And feel free, you know, if you need to ask me any questions in private or here in the open, I don't know how, what the protocol is here, you know, so, thank you.
I do have one, thank you, I do have one that you could answer easily, I think, is when did you actually get involved in Buella?
About four years ago.
Four years?
But, yeah, that first year, I was really not really involved, it was more like the transitioning time, and so the Pastor McLean, who was before me. He passed away in a, in a car accident, leaving Buella one night, going back to Maine. He was on, is it two oh two or four or nine, what is that going out to the seacoast?
It's all, all in one.
He had a drunk driver, it was all over the news, he was the president before me, and he was driving home with his wife, and a drunk driver went over a center line, killed him instantly, and his wife almost passed away, so.
What year was that?
That was, that was five, six years ago, maybe.
So twenty twenty twenty?
Yeah, so there was a period of time where nobody, I'll be honest with you guys, nobody wants to be in the position I'm in, the camp don't have nothing, it just don't. I've been trying to build it back up to get people coming, and we do have a lot of interest in families that want to gather, but it's a lot of work in terms of. I didn't know anything, the ones that had the information of how they ran things, and the obligations here with the town, they all died unfortunately, we just lost another member. He was faithful here for over twenty years, you know, he passed away, so it's like, I'm just in a position to where I'm busy enough down there with our church, my business and everything. And so, if you guys ever need help with any dead trees in Canterbury, I, I can tell you this, I've got the experience to get, help you guys out.
Thank you for the offer.
I'm just saying, I was looking around as I was dragging it here, I was like, oh, they got plenty of dead ash trees around here. That's our number one tree, we're taking down, down in the Manchester, southern New Hampshire area, yeah. We've got a big crate, and we, we take them all down around the houses, but I'm sure you guys know during the storms, they, they're not too, they're not too nice when they come down, but.
Couple of questions for me, just, I suppose, general.
Yes, sir.
When, I understand it's been a number of years since the camp has been in use.
Yes.
When was the last time it was actually used for a gathering, for an event?
Probably two years ago, I have, I put a stop to it, because one thing I was looking into, the possibility, seeing what we could do to upgrade, you know, the watering, I've got a plumber, a licensed plumber. He was gonna come in, and, you know, because like, the plumbing, you know, just little things, still the winter, that freezes out, none of its, I was wanting to make upgrades. This is what I've kind of stepped into, and without any money coming in, because once that COVID hit for a while, and even though that's been quite a few years, no, a lot of people didn't come back.
Right.
You know what I mean?
So your neighbors up there say that in twenty twenty-three, there was no use at all? No gatherings, no anything?
Yeah, we had several, several families go up and stay, but whether or not she was there, running, you know, sixty-five days that year, and watching every day, I don't know. The timing of it, we've had people go up there to camp and actually set up tents.
Yeah, how recent is that?
That I'm aware of right now, I don't really know the exact dates.
Okay.
They don't have to check in with anybody, they just show up to camp, they don't say?
Well, there's three or four of them that work very closely with me, that have keys to everything, and, and know, you know, how to turn on electric and all that stuff, which we've obviously shut a lot of that down during the off-season, and, and you know, it's been so wet up here. But I would say, within the last year, my brother-in-law, I had him go up there, he's been taking care of the mowing, and doing some small repairs, like some of the, some of the steps and stuff, he's a carpenter. So, you know, he's got, I told him, park your trailer there, and bring your power tools up there, and just try to help me out to get some of this stuff, you know, it, it's rotten wood, and I don't want anybody, you know. And so, I wish I had more, well, finances to figure this with you, I would do what I could.
Yeah.
To not only pay the debt off for you guys, but I would put a little money into that, I mean, I put a lot of my home money into the camp. I don't want to be the one known to, you know, that, that, oh, you know, Mister Davis, he's the one that, you know, closed the camp, or, you know, I, I don't want to be known as that guy, I, I want to fight through this and kind of push my way through and do what I can. I'm limited, obviously, financially, of what I can do, I need the help of some of the others, that's why I was just mentioning to you guys that if I have a little bit of time, I can probably get some other pastors. And people that come to the camp to help us, and, you know, if I had a check right now, I'd write it out, out to you guys, but it's unfortunately, you know, I'm not in that position right now.
Mister Davis, have you filed your twenty twenty-five exemptions?
So, no, sir, I, this is where, this was totally unaware of you, the secretary, okay, who was taking care of a lot of that, okay, Martin, I don't know if you guys remember the Martins? They, they dumped, they worked with Pastor McLean, the one that was killed. They, they moved to Maine, and they're, they're elderly now, so, basically, they never told me about filing that, for years, I think it changed just a few years ago, and so.
And then, do you recall getting a letter from us on June twentieth, twenty twenty-four?
Yeah, the letter was, the letters were being sent to the P O box, and like I said, this is not your guys' problem. I didn't have access to that.
Seven Geneva Street?
Yeah, that, I just presently, in the last two years, gave that to you guys, yes, sir.
So the, the letter of June twentieth, twenty twenty-four gives you the whole procedure for getting the religious exemption, including the deadline for filing days.
That was what date it's cut?
June twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
Because, yeah, we, we talked about that, that right after I got on the board, about the exemption.
Yeah. And like I said, whatever I owe you guys, I'm gonna make it right, I'm responsible now, ignorance is no excuse, I'm in this now, and I'm like, okay, I'm not gonna be the one that drops the ball and, and. Puts the camp in greater debt because of my, my own ignorance of what, and like I said, because of some of the board members that did take care of this stuff, and the secretary, which now can't really help. I'm being forced to try to get people in these positions to kind of help me keep things going. So I was ignorant about a lot of, you know, filing that document with you guys, and as a nonprofit and all of that, so, all I'm asking is just for a little patience with me to help maybe put a schedule out there to where we can, you know, get this paid up. And whatever I gotta file, I'll file it, I, I don't know what you guys are willing to do, if you need to have a, give that to me, I totally respect that.
But I, I think honestly, the onus is on you to, to call Mandy Irving as soon as possible.
I'm sorry, sir, who's?
Mandy Irving, the woman who's been sending you the letters and notices?
That's the Canterbury Town Assessor, it's so you can reach her at the Sam Lake House. Um, do we have a correct, is the address now, as far as you know?
Yeah, the Geneva, that's where I want it sent, yeah.
Yeah, that's where they've been going to, yeah, since twenty twenty-four at least.
Yeah, it's been a little over a year, I think, because I remember her specifically asking me, it might have been Sandy, did you say Sandy?
Mandy.
Mandy, I apologize. I remember somebody specifically saying, we've been sending it here, but it hasn't, well, the secretary's the only one that had the key to the P O box and conquered, I didn't have it, so. These are internal things that I inherited with a miscommunication, and anyways, to make a long story short, this is what happens, you know, and what I stepped into, so. I, I apologize that things are not more in order, I kind of stepped into this, and it was, you know, very challenging for me to get up to par on all of my responsibilities. Really, even the secretarial stuff got put on me, because they stepped away, and then when they are not communicating and telling you, you gotta do this, you gotta do this, you gotta do this. I was just, you know, I started getting letters saying, we owe a tax bill, and I'm like, oh, okay, I thought this was a nonprofit, no, you gotta file this, and so, I don't mean to bring any, you know, too much to this, but I just want to simply say that. I'm learning a lot very quickly, and I want to try to do what I can to resolve it, you know, and I appreciate you guys' time this evening, and I appreciate anything that you're willing to help. and I appreciate anything that you're willing to help us to do. I, I understand the camp's been here for almost seventy years. So the very fact that we haven't had to pay, you know, it's been tax exempt for a long, long time, longer than any of you have probably even been on the board. So the very fact that, you know, we would all of a sudden start getting tax bill, I understand that it wasn't getting used, but there's a reason why it wasn't getting used, you know. COVID hit a lot of nonprofits very hard, you know, and so there was a very little budget there, you know, even before then. So when we finally, you know, got past that hump, there's not much support at all. And so it's left me in a really kind of bind because without finances, you can't do a whole lot, you know. So I, I'm, I'm willing to work with you guys. I, I feel you guys have been very patient, but at the same time, I'm just coming before you, just seeing what you guys could possibly do to work with us.
Ken, am I correct that the taxes are for twenty twenty-four, correct?
Correct.
So, oh, yeah.
And, and wasn't there, I might be confusing this with another exemption we had come through at the same time. But the year before, when the paperwork was filed and we had a discussion about, you know, when the paperwork needed to be filed the following year to make sure that everything was okay. So at that point, was Mandy talking with?
Mandy had mentioned to me that something about the state had just notified the towns that you guys were not obligated to tell the nonprofits that you gotta file this, or you guys weren't responsible to actually send that paperwork out. Mandy told me that and I was like, oh, so I gotta come down or I gotta make some copies for each year and file it by this date. I was, that, she was very kind and even let me know that. I, I didn't even know that. So a lot of these issues is because of my lack of, I'll just put it plain to you guys, the secretary and her husband, they were just kind of mentally not there, okay? So when they kind of stepped aside, taking care of all the, you know, the legal stuff, you know, the paperwork, when they stepped aside, they didn't fill me in on any thing of how everything is ran. So this is all new to me. This is all, and so forgive me for sounding like I've drugged my feet. I, maybe I have in some areas just because I was unsure of what I would. Oh, we gotta go file that. Oh, okay. And when you don't have people fill in on that stuff, you know what I mean? Like I said, my plate's been full just with my own personal life. So I also am open to you guys just educate me on anything to, to be able to satisfy, you know, any, any of the laws here in the town of, of, you know.
So at, at this point, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm, I'm not sure there's any action we need to take. You haven't filed for exemption for twenty twenty-five, so there's nothing for us to add to that.
For twenty twenty-four or did that one get revoked?
Twenty twenty-four, it was filed.
Late.
Late and you rejected it because of late time. And then it was not filed for twenty-five, this April.
And what happened in twenty twenty-three? That was late as well, correct?
It was late, but it was.
And that's all on me. That's all me and I'll just tell you guys that because of the uncertainty of, you know, a lot of things I, I just, I didn't know. And then when I got hit with the tax bill, you know, I was like, okay. So this is where I'm at.
So how do we proceed?
I, I think, I think anyway, the way we proceed is he files the form that's already overdue for twenty twenty-five and, and then only then can we take any action. I don't know what other action we can take at this point.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing, they owe over eleven thousand dollars worth for. So you have some options there. You can abate the taxes, you can do a payment plan, or you can say the lien is already enfiled.
Yep.
So it's already leaned on the property. So at some point, that, that's gonna have to be paid or forgiven by the town. And then you would have to address the two thousand twenty-five tax, taxes.
And that's still, that's, that's still twenty twenty-four that we're talking about, the eleven thousand?
That's twenty twenty-four. And then for twenty twenty-five, the filing wasn't featured for the, in April.
Right.
With the exempt status.
Right.
So you have to address that and, and you're signing the tax warrant tonight, so the tax wouldn't be going out in a few weeks.
Yeah.
So.
All right. So I, I'm thinking he should get that tax form filed, call Mandy. What are we thinking as far as the eleven thousand for twenty twenty-four?
The, the problem is, is if it really hasn't been used and it seems like it's, it's undecided whether, how much it's going to be used, you're gonna find yourself in the same position again, having come up with eleven thousand dollars for a piece of property that isn't being used.
And the way the tax laws are written, the property, just because it's owned by a nonprofit, does not make it tax exempt. It has to be used for the purpose of that nonprofit.
And the file, and the paperwork should be filed.
Correct, correct. So that's, that's where our assessor gets in a bind because she has to follow the law that says if it's not being used for that nonprofit purposes, then it's not exempt.
Yes, sir.
So.
And this is where I was in a bind, you guys. I, I, I seen things that physically, I told my, our insurance company, we're gonna get this upgraded, this upgraded, because you know, they, they, they want to make sure things are safe. I wasn't gonna let people go to the camp and then the camp gets sued. So one of the big reasons why there was that delay of not allowing people to come up there, I personally, as a father, as a, as a family man, didn't want an accident to happen, you know. When you've got loose banisters, I, I want to repair all that stuff. Frankly, a lot of the leadership before me neglected all of that and I know the reason why. There wasn't the budget to do a lot of that. I'm gonna try to turn that around if I can.
Yeah.
And I want to get the place in a really nice condition. I've got people willing to help to get things built back up, you know. I like, I, I preach the sermons on Sunday on restoration and repair, you know, I mean, I think that you guys have seen it in an old town. It takes money and it takes volunteers and that is challenging to get at times. So I thank you guys for at least considering doing what you can to help us. I'll pay, you know, what we are responsible to pay and whatever you guys decide, I will honor it, I'll respect it and I'll do my best to make it right.
And I guess the other question, which Joe will be visiting.
I would say code, building code requires an assembly permit.
Yes, sir.
For buildings that have, I can't remember what the, what the number is. Our building inspector may want to meet with you to look at the buildings, determine what they're being used for and then see if they're up to code and if they meet the requirements to have assemblies in there.
Yeah, so the newest building I know is, was seen by somebody quite a few years back. That's the newest one. The previous president built one where we actually kind of gathered and had a church service. It's what you call the, the main sanctuary or whatever you want to call it.
How many people will that building hold?
I don't know what it's actually, personally. I think it might be a hundred and fifty maybe. I'm, I'm just throwing a number out there.
Yeah, understood.
But I can tell you this, it's usually under fifty.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I didn't realize the building was that big down there. I always thought it was just a ground.
It's not finished on the inside, yeah. It's not finished on the inside. It's just two by fours, you know, so it's used just primarily for the, uh, the summer season, fall season, you know, warmer weather season. Yeah. It's not got sheet rock and insulation on the inside, yeah. Yeah, it's, I think that's not even ten years old, I don't think.
All right. So what I'm thinking is you should be calling Mandy ASAP.
Yes, sir.
Getting your twenty twenty-five form filed.
Yes, sir.
Um, when Joel calls, talk to him about him getting up there and looking at your buildings. Certainly only speaking for myself, I'm certainly willing to, to talk about a payment plan.
Yes, sir.
Or how the other board members feel about that. How we can say what we decided tonight.
No, but what I would like is some sort of communication from the town, Mr. Davis, with a response that says you've got it and you understand what it means. Because it seems like we've had problems in the past communicating whether you get the letters or not and you get a letter and who, who have you talked with and what they've said. I think we need to be very clear that we don't find ourselves back here next year.
Yeah, the response.
Having this conversation again, because this seems like the second time we've had the conversation. And I'm, and I'm willing to help, but I think I'd like to see good faith on your part, that Fula Fellowship is working as hard to make it right. And, and not just you saying making it right, but that you.
And one of the biggest things.
That you sign on the dotted line, that you understand what you need to do.
See, this is coming out of my own pocket at this point, to be fair with you.
Whose ever pocket it is, we need to know that the pocket understands.
Yeah, and I, yeah, the camp, that's like trying to get cracker juice, to put it plain. I'm gonna be the one that I hope restores it back to where it needs to be. And a lot of this, probably if I had better communication with the ones that previously had it in their hands, I wouldn't be going through this right now. Those would have been filed on time. So forgive me, that, that's not an excuse, but when, I know you guys know, there's people we work with that are not very good at communication and there's people we don't see eye to eye with, whether it's church, whether it's government, politics. We don't have to tell what's going on in politics today. There's a lot of stuff going on. But here, I will be more than willing to, to be accountable to you guys with saying, yes, I received it, I read it, I understand it and I will do my best for the, for the town of Canterbury to, to do what I gotta do to pay this debt off.
And can we put a time? I mean, I know sometimes we can, we're trying to frame a thing.
Yeah, I mean, you're late already with your twenty twenty-five form by, what, a month? A little better than a month?
Yeah, I'd asked if I could get that form sent to me and.
Yeah, so a little better than a month.
I, I didn't know where those forms were readily available, so I'm gonna make like ten to fifteen copies and store them away and file because before they told me, when I took over, oh no, they'll send you that in the mail. Well, I never received it. And I'm gonna talk to Mandy. She says, oh no, we're not obligated to send you guys it. So here I am getting conflicting info, you know what I mean? So that's what I mean. I think what I've dealt with the most is the breakdown in communication from my predecessors. Those are, those are before me. I, I was just kind of learning as we go, unfortunately. It's like if you step into your new position and these guys don't tell you how this stuff works, you're kind of lost. I mean, you.
That's, that's why I go to the seminars.
So, so thank you guys for at least your consideration. I, I really, I, I, I thank you for at least considering to work with me. If it was up to me, there's a part of me that's like, hey, let somebody else deal with this, but I, I'm not a quitter. I'm a hardworking man. I work my hands to the bone to build my little business. We're not, we're not, you know, millionaires, but any stretch of the imagination. But I'll take my own personal money and do what I can to faithfully make the payments and I'll call Mandy and talk to the other gentleman.
I think where we should leave it is when we get your twenty twenty-five form, let's talk again.
Yes, sir. You would want me to come back here, sir? Okay. And that gives you guys some time to assess everything.
Can we, I have one more question, or two, please? And, and do not take this in a, in the bad way that it might sound. Do you have a computer that you use and get email on?
Yeah.
Okay. I only ask that because I know a lot of people who, who don't, so I'm just checking. Do we have a current email address for you in case we also need to communicate with you back?
Yeah, yeah. I found a couple of miss spam, but that's all.
Okay, so we have, and Cal, you've got that or?
But I.
I'd have to look into finding probably.
I think it is updated. I hope. I'll check with Mandy. Will she be able to?
We have a whole number.
Why, why don't we check right now? So we know and then time won't go by.
It should be at treemanuppie@yahoo.com.
Cal can put that right in the, if that's okay. Is that all right?
Don't see that any word to put.
Oh, it might be being sent to somebody else, which is probably my.
Would you say that again?
Treeman, T R E E M A N U P, pie, H I G H, at yahoo.com. That's my own personal one. Yeah. Thank you, guys.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time tonight, guys. And sorry for, you know, I wish I had to, you know, but you guys at least put me to the top of the list. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. It's a hard thing to plead your case, so thanks for coming in.
Well.
All right.
Well, yeah, I would, I would just like to see, you know, in a timely fashion, is we can say if we don't hear from him about this.
I'll get together with Mandy and we'll send something out to him, like an instruction sheet.
Yeah.
The dates and, and everything and ask for a reply. So he gets it and it's on the screen.
Okay, thank you. And now that we've got an email address too. Thank you.
All right. What are you thinking, Ken?
Megan, so you're looking to speak with us?
Speak or listen, Megan. What would you like? Or both?
Perhaps both, but solid waste committee, not here in my role as planning board member here as resident.
Okay, yeah. Do you wanna?
Does anyone else here speaking about solid waste?
Nope, no one.
No? No one? Okay.
Join us.
Interesting. So was the board in, in need to speak about the Roy?
Yeah, it's on the agenda.
Is it Plisco, Tisco?
Plisco.
Plisco.
Plisco, yeah.
So I am an abutter to the dump Ambie groundwater monitoring zone. Um, so when I read that report, it was alarming. The numbers are alarming. But I did my due diligence and talked to D E S, so I wanted to share some information that I think would be helpful for all of you as you sort through kind of what this is. Things that I found that are accurate and seems to get right, the numbers are bad. And the numbers, the, the hundred thousand dollars is being put aside to deal with it at some point is probably too low. Those are very correct. The kind of subtext, I think, that the town of the board was doing something or not doing enough or state law, town and the board are doing what needs to be done. So there is a groundwater monitoring zone. And just so for reference, for the record, I spoke with, I called Jamie O'Rourke, who is the project manager down there. Uh, he was out of town, but he put me in touch with his second in command, that's Julie Spencer, is who I spoke with the D E S. So PFAS was founded, I think, in twenty seventeen. PFAS and all those other chemicals, I don't need to say all the acronyms. And so it's because they were high, it's set up a groundwater monitoring zone that there is a small parcel owned by Canterbury Conservation Commission between that and Crane Neck, which is mine and my husband's property. The groundwater wells are largely in, right on the edge of my property, but a lot of them are in that conservation zone. It's in, in addition to right around the dump. The numbers are extraordinary. Now, we know how water works. It doesn't stay in the wetlands in that little conservation zone. What's, what, according to Julie, what the state requires is that it does not touch, it ends up touching a drinking water groundwater, oh well, that's gonna be a problem and the town will be forced to put at point of sight remediation, which can be up to twenty thousand dollars a house. There are six abutters that D E S has as listed official abutters. So there is one private well being monitored. The one immediately next to them, I think it's eighty-seven baptisms in that report, is also elevated. So when I told, I asked Julie if it was common for only one well to be monitored and she seemed a little surprised and said, well, let me talk to Jamie about that because no, I would imagine that all six abutters should be being monitored. So that may be something for you all to talk to various engineering about. Also, she said that they have just recently started testing surface water. Now, surface water is connected to Crane Neck. Right now, there are no state regulations, so if it's in the surface water, there's no state reg that says you guys have to do something about this. But that's currently in legislation and it may pass soon. She says she doesn't know what that something looks like. It could be cap it, it could be remediated with filters, it could be dig it all out and relocate it, it could be monitor it. She has no idea, but they expect that some. She has no idea, but they expect that some, some sort of legislation about surface water PFAS will pass. So in thinking about budgeting and finances, if that passes, I mean, surface water is tested like two hundred times the healthy limit. Um, so if the state comes and says, you know, even if it's not touching a well, and the state says, well, it's in your surface water, now here's what the state law says you have to do about it. Canterbury might wanna be prepared for that. Um, and then, um, let's see, what else did she say? So I talked to her about getting private testing on both Crane Neck, which is our pond, I don't know, it's a ten acre, so technically the state owns it. Her deed says we're principal owners, I don't know what the difference is there. But, um, but we plan to test that water and then we're gonna test our well. DES said if PFAS levels are high in Crane Neck, they wanna know, because what they're gonna do is expand that groundwater monitoring boundary out further than our that, um, because it means that that's spreading. I think that the hope is that right now that the wetlands might be containing it, we don't know, so we're gonna test that. Um, she said the steps would be if we do private testing on Crane Neck and it comes back with elevated levels that are close to what Aries is finding at the monitoring sites. Um, to tell them, they will then have a reason to come and test it themselves to verify. And then if they verify that those numbers are correct, they'll expand the boundary. Um, and then, you know, if we test our well and it comes up in our well, then all six people should be testing their well. And questions up to whose cost if they should have been being tested this whole time instead of just one? Um, I mean, we're not talking about a hundred abutters here, forty abutters, kind of six, of people that could be affected. It doesn't seem like a stretch for the town to be able to monitor five more wells every year. Um, that seems reasonable to me, but, um, we're gonna incur that to see what's going on and make sure that things look okay. So from what I gathered, lots right in the report, in the report in terms of the numbers being quite bad. Um, correct, hundred thousand dollars, when it comes time to remediate, I'm not gonna cut it. If they require digging that site up, that's millions of dollars. Um, whether or not this people help with money with that, she said that's all gonna come out and however this regulation, um, gets shaped.
Can you pause perhaps a second, Megan?
Sure.
What's the hundred thousand you keep referring to, though, what's in the cap reserve for?
I think so, it was in the report, um, I didn't.
Alright, so I didn't, if, if it's talking about the cap reserve for capping the landfill, there is a hundred and fifty-three in there.
Yeah.
Just so you know, so tap it in more.
Yeah, and.
It's still not as much as you might need, but just so you know what's in there.
Yeah. Yeah, and also, um, if that's reserved for capping the landfill, capping the landfill and remediating PFAS are separate.
Separate, yes.
So can, I don't know what the rules are for you, as if, if you find it in a well, can you use that to put point of site filtration? Because that's not capping, that's just filtering the PFAS out, so.
It, it, it would depend on the, the wording of the warrant, I believe it's just for capping the landfill.
Right.
Yeah.
So that might be something that you also look into going ahead of future warrant articles, the potential need to set aside money for that if this is spreading and if it's on the other side of Crane Neck where we'll be testing, it's spreading, it's water, so. Um, so yeah, that's the information I wanted to share. Um, and I do, you guys are always striking a balance, I know, between trying to keep taxes down and then trying to do the right thing. The state isn't requiring anything, but as you guys consider, I say you guys, I'm sorry about you all consider, it's a havoc. You all consider what's.
I'm, I'm okay with the, with the royal you guys, that's, that's fine, I, I do not have a problem with that.
Okay. So as you consider what to do with that side, I know there's a bunch of questions about where to go with that, I don't have a preference, I don't care, I don't have skin in the game there, I just care about what's going on with Crane Neck. Um, we do wanna keep taxes low. It is also in our Plan for Tomorrow, dozens and dozens of times. Keep Canterbury a place for, safe for wildlife habitat, preserve our natural resources for coming generations. Environmental protection should be of utmost concern, habitat preservation, providing clean water to our community. Efforts to maintain groundwater purity should remain a particularly high priority. So planning ahead, if there are things that we can consider as you figure out what to do with that space that will be aligned with what folks say they want in the Plan for Tomorrow, it would be important. That is all, I didn't expect that.
Don't worry, we're actually.
No, no, no.
Okay.
Um.
Don't say that's all, because that was a lot, so thank you.
Yeah, do, who decides what wells, where the wells went? And I know the, this is, all, all the direction has come from DES, I think it's probably from DES. They, when the PFAS and PFOS was found, um, I think it was sixteen, seventeen, whatever, whatever, I'm not sure of the date, but I can give that. They required, uh, DES required additional testing. And I believe it was three years ago, when they said that they wanted us, they asked, uh, they, they talked to Aries Engineering and found out and figured out where the closest water wells for houses, residential water wells were. And they felt the state said, you only need to test that one, the one that we're testing now. They were, residents were sent a letter from the DES saying that there was potential for the contamination and that the town was gonna pay for, uh, testing. So all the, all the instructions, all the work that the town has done, all the work that Aries has done has come from, uh, regulations set up by the state. And, um, and, and we follow them every year, so that's, um, I think that, you know, what, a lot of things you just said to me are news. DES has never said that we may have to expand the groundwater testing. Um, they get reports every year, they know what the levels are. Um, and I, I don't know, if the state tells us, doesn't say that you have to start doing additional testing, then we don't. Um, that's just, you know, that's how, that's how we've been handling it.
Yeah, and I, I think that was kind of born of the fact that we're willing to test Crane Neck and that would be useful information for them to know, because their concern is that this is being contained. They're looking for, are there, are there increasing levels? Or is it within normal fluctuations based on, you know, how much rain and all that kind of stuff? Is it, is it remaining a steady level on those sites and then is it spreading? So I think that they're look, they're looking at surface water as a fairly new thing. I don't think that was when the groundwater perimeter boundary was established, they weren't looking at surface water, but now that we know it's in surface water and there's fishing advisories in some ponds and things like that. And that could be a thing too, um, where, you know, if they're extending that to monitor Crane Neck as a public waterway, I mean, anybody can go back there.
Mm-hmm.
It may be they need to post, you can't fish or swim at your own risk.
Mm-hmm.
Can anything there, so the state wants to know if it's in Crane Neck.
Right, and it, isn't the fishing advisory for Mercury?
Yeah, I have it.
I have it.
They have it for PFAS now, it's in, it's long the process statement.
Okay, but I, I think actually the, there's a statewide advisory for fishing due to Mercury as well, yeah. So there's a lot of bad stuff in reports, you're right. Alright.
And, and may I ask a question?
Please.
Okay. Do you know, I imagine that the contract with Aries is, is just a comprehensive number, but do you know line item, not off the top of your head right now, but is there a way to ask them line item, what is it cost to test, like just this well, what part of this total cost is just that one well? And what is it to cost for them to test five more?
Yeah, um, I, I would, I would guess that based on, on, um, you know, our history with what it costs to test the wells, the wells we have, they would be able to estimate how much it would cost for additional wells. Whether it was one or three or five or whatever, they would, they would be able to estimate that. Um, it's, it's, uh, the cost of the testing is not the, um, labor for the engineering firm to come out and do the, get the samples, the cost is the lab work.
Yeah.
That is where the high, high cost comes from.
Yes.
And because of, um, I guess the prevalence of, of this, that, that this is something that finding out is more prevalent in different places. The lot, labs are being, uh, asked to do more, and so, just like anything else, for demand, the demand goes up, the cost goes up. So that's, that's, so I don't know, they, I'm sure they can estimate it, but we wouldn't know until, uh, we got the final bill.
Hmm, mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And Ken, did you say that when this was, when that first, the issue first arose, whenever it was, twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen? And letters were sent to the abutters that there was?
Yeah, the only, the only letter that was sent was to the neighbors to get their water well tested.
But to the, to those six neighbors or to the?
Nope, just that one neighbor.
That one, and that one was the one?
That was that the DES said that this water well had to be tested for that neighbor, and so they were sent a letter from the DES uh, letting them know, and then Aries Engineering does the testing on it. Um, this was brought up at the town meeting when this first came up, because it required additional testing.
Right.
So the budget, it didn't double, but it almost doubled. And so we explained it at the town meeting back then, um, that that's the reason, uh, why the well, the, uh, testing was increasing, the cost of the testing was increasing, was because they had found PFAS and PFOS.
Right.
Um, we did extensive checking on history, what could have caused it. Um, it's a result of a lot of different things, one of the things is firefighting foam. And the question was, were there any big fires up there that they used foam on? And we checked into that, we couldn't find anybody that remembered the fire department using foam up there, uh, to put out a fire or disposing foam up there, when we, when we had that awareness, so. They don't know exactly where, and, and apparently, you know, where, as, as time goes on, everybody finds out more and more about this, these chemicals and what, where they're found. Um, Scott and I were going for the fire department and they're finding out now that it was in our turnout gear, so.
It's, it's my knowledge, the old landfill was unlined, correct?
Correct, correct.
So.
It is uncapped.
Trash is buried.
Right, and it is uncapped, and that's, that's part of, uh, part of the concern is about the cap. Uh, the cap is supposed to, it's a, a barrier that prevents any rainwater or meltwater, I think, going down through the, the, uh, buried refuse. Um, so.
So suffice to say that no, currently no more, or if any PFAS is going in there that we know of at all. So any PFAS that's been found.
It's, it, right, it's no, it's no longer landfill, it's nothing else.
Has been from however many years ago.
Right, right.
So if the numbers are apparent, perhaps increasing, shall we say, it's still from the original whatever. Okay, um, my, my bigger question is, so in twenty sixteen, when this came up and the one person was alerted that their well needed to be tested and it came up at town meeting, at that time, I mean, this was long, obviously before you were in town. Did any of the other abutters say, you wanna be tested too?
No.
They could have.
They could have.
Okay, but no one did?
Oh.
Okay. But everybody was aware because it was brought up in the public, the public of town meeting?
It was brought up at town meeting, yes, yeah, right.
Okay.
So someone, they had to have been there, so.
Right, that's right, yeah.
Yeah.
Typically, it's real.
How many people got?
Yeah, that's, yeah, yeah, two hundred and fifty.
Well, and, and yet again, that's, that's part of the, you know, the onus of the people who were right there to hear that this, I mean, you obviously heard that this is an issue and went out and did, you know, research and talk to people and found out what this meant, but um, that brings it, you know, that started back in twenty sixteen and here we are today, now it's a bigger issue, but it's, it's, it's just coming, I mean, it's just, it's just, people are just getting concerned about it now, where they could have been equally concerned about it.
Yeah, and again, I, I, to reiterate, the town did everything that was required to do.
Yeah. That was required. Yeah.
Um, the state said you have to do this testing and the town did. Um, so I, I'm not engineer, I'm not a water scientist, I don't, none of the board members were. I think that, um, you know, we followed what we considered the experts' advice on notification and testing, and so that's what we did.
And Aries too, of course, working hand in hand with DNS to, with DES to.
Yep.
To fulfill their requirement.
Yep.
Yeah, I think it's also important to highlight the knowledge of what this is and what the impacts, if people are, is evolving. People may not have been concerned because they don't know what PFAS is. Now we know, now we know what it, it's an endocrine disruptor, it causes cancer, like people didn't know.
Yeah, and that, and that was the thing, back.
Right.
Back when it was, when we were notifying, this is what it was, there wasn't the awareness that there is today, so.
Was that pre, like previous to Saint Paul Dean, down in, ever?
I think it was right around the same time that it was coming up.
Yeah.
That was, sure, sure, sure. And in the last three years, I mean, I don't know how many emails you've gotten, so I, I know I've gotten some from your whole being in the military and, uh, being on the firepower, but then I'm eligible for this, these lawsuits, these class action lawsuits. Uh, we were, we were actually, the town was actually subpoenaed by, uh, Three M who manufactures a lot of these chemicals, uh, particularly the firefighting foam, um, to, to do a, a statement on what was used up at the transfer station. So we have all those records where we were, we were subpoenaed on, uh, by, by a law firm that is handling a, a class action lawsuit about this.
When was that, Ken?
Uh.
I mean, recently or like?
It was, okay, I, I think three or four years ago, five, even more five years ago.
Years ago.
I have, I, I still all have all that, so, yeah.
Okay.
Um, question in terms of levels, I know they burn things at the dump, is there anything about ash or things that are burnt getting into the waterways that can cause PFAS?
At the burn pit now, or when they were burning it, when it was like?
No, now, what they're doing now.
Now, it's a brush?
Now, it's just, now, now they're just burning brush, they don't.
Oh, okay, they're not burning anything.
Yeah, and it has to be smaller than three or five inches or something like that, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Megan, when are you planning on getting the testing, your personal testing done?
Uh, probably, yeah, within the next few weeks, we've got a call around, I know that we've priced out testing the private wells, it's gonna be a couple thousand dollars, but we haven't, um, haven't priced out what it would be to test surface water, which, yeah, it's easier to get, but the lab.
You would think, yeah.
The lab fees, like, like you said, the lab fees are the lab fees, and that's the expensive part.
The lab is the lab. Yeah. Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Um, you can also test the fish in there, just like their flesh has PFAS in it.
Yeah.
Um, which, you know, we're not the only ones that eat fish, all the wildlife eat fish, and then we eat the wildlife, the deer and things like that, so.
Right.
Um, it's not necessarily localized, it can, deer that are on my property drinking from Crane Neck can go over to Calvin's to get shot and. Now he's eating PFAS from my, from my pond.
To be shocked.
Speaking of shots.
Yeah, that's, that's a.
Um, I do have one more question, um, a request for an appointment to the Solid Waste Committee, I think, um, as an abutter. It's particularly important to me. Um, I think that there's a lot of, a lot of planning for shifts to go on and I have a background in change management, from my consulting work that I've done. Um, and I think that I could be very helpful to ensuring that that board, um, has an oversight over what they should and then fulfills the will of the select board, because I know it's an appointed position.
Right, and, um, that's one of the things we're gonna be discussing, is, is what role they, they seem to have morphed and have taken on a role that we never intended them to have.
Right.
So they're supposed to be in advisory capacity on certain things, and, um, I don't think they're fulfilling that, but, but we'll be discussing that.
And I also, I have weirdly good ideas about, well, why are we using these bags instead of stickers? You know how many towns just use a bowl of stickers and you put a sticker in your bag so you're not wasting so much plastic?
That's what we wanted for Solid Waste Committee to talk about.
Well, if you, if, well, just if you.
Stickers, it's such a low cost, easy solution, why has that not been done yet?
Um, I think that if you read through the minutes of the Solid Waste Committee Day, it's been a lot of time discussing stickers, uh, why?
Really?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
So, um.
I, I, I will also add to that, uh, Mary and I had looked into a vending machine that we put at the transfer station that would disperse stickers.
Hmm.
It got that far.
That'd be great.
And then.
What's from the stickers?
That's as far as it went, it was never followed up on.
Why?
That is a very good question. That is a very good question.
How much is sticker sales?
Yeah.
It's, it's a, it's a good question, that's part of why we want to see how the committee is functioning, because, you know.
I also wanna see how the committee is functioning, and that's why I'm requesting an appointment.
Okay, so, um.
There's no, there's no captain members on that committee, is there?
Yeah, but, um, wherever.
No.
There is one, when I look online at the committee members, it says there's like one line available or something like that, so I don't know if that's accurate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I think we need to discuss further how the future of the solid waste committee, before we start appointing people to it.
Yeah.
If, if you understand that, if, if they're going to be changing their mission, your expertise may not be needed there, it might be needed somewhere else. So it's, I, I wouldn't be willing to just say, yeah, let's appoint you, but one, thank you for the offer. Two, I think that expertise would be helpful someplace, I'm just not sure right now that that's the place for it. Because I think that, that we have more discussion to do about how that committee might function going forward. So, and not knowing that, it's hard to start putting people on it.
Or is it being disbanded?
Should we?
No, I think, I, well, I think we need to discuss the work they've done and, and the work that they are going to be asked to do. And if the committee as it is now is still helpful doing that. That's a discussion we haven't even started yet, so.
Is it, is it, is everyone on that's appointed to the solid waste committee or appointed to any appointable committee right now? Appointed because they have a specific expertise, or is this also aligned with the fact that the town is constantly calling for volunteers to set up and do something particularly meaningful?
Both.
So here I am checking both of those boxes.
Yes.
It won't be considered?
No, I, I think what we're saying is it, it just won't be considered tonight.
Oh, oh, yeah, no, not that it wouldn't be considered at all, oh, no, the advice, if you got that impression, that's not what I mean.
So, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
I think just before, before we appoint a person with expertise to a, a committee, no, that's not what I meant to say. What I mean to say is, it doesn't make sense that if we're unsure how the committee is going to function going forward, it makes sense to just start dropping people into it, regardless of their expertise. It doesn't mean that the offer isn't absolutely appreciated, and that if that expertise is needed, we know where to go for it. That's, that's not what I meant, didn't want you to get the impression that it was. Did I, did I make that, did I make that clear? I meant to, I think I talked backwards a little bit, but.
How do, I've not been, been elected, not appointed, how do those typically go? Is it, someone makes a request and then time?
Yep, and then the select board acts on it, and, and, you know, typically, rarely we deny, you know, people were lying in my time on the select board, and that was on the CBA.
Okay.
But it's rare, so it's, it's a pretty simple process. It's just your timing. You know, we didn't expect you tonight, and the solid waste committee is on the agenda for different reasons than you're here for, so.
Oh, I thought this was to talk about the report?
Nope.
Okay.
No, but it's-
Well, one of the things we're talking about is the report, so.
I see.
Issues with someone who purports themselves to be an expert and is not, so.
And it's not here to talk about it, that's on?
It's on the agenda.
So, will I be notified when there will be a discussion about my appointment so that I can be present?
Sure.
What, like, will, I don't, because sometimes things just say old business, and then you, you get brought up and you don't know. So can I be notified, hey, we're gonna talk about potential for me joining?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Does, and I, I've never actually done appointments from the, from, from this angle. Usually they come from the committee to us, like the committee says, we have a person who's interested in joining our committee, that's why.
Sometimes, yeah.
It, it goes both ways.
Yeah.
I moved to this too, Megan, so I need, I need to figure out the process.
Yeah.
Okay, so it could go either way.
Still important as well, so, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
So is, is Megan sitting here in, in the meeting and in the minutes saying, I would like to be appointed to this, is sufficient to start the process?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, any idea on timeline for that?
No, we're, we're gonna talk about solid waste committee tonight, so.
Which you're welcome to stay for, of course, but, because I haven't gotten there yet.
Yeah, we still have a couple days at all.
This is, the report is, is looming large, shall we say.
Well, hopefully I provided some clarity.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. And it will be helpful information to know what the testing font?
Oh, yes, I will, I'll the town meeting, yes, no.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Megan.
Do you really need to have any other update about Ares or?
Um, I did get email. We expected the report, the actual report, you want me to? Yeah. Talk about that right now? Yeah, why don't we just, we'll take things a little out of order, since Megan started us on the solid waste committee. Let's, let's stay. Okay, I spoke with George Holt at Ares Engineering, he asked if I sent the report to him. He responded, the simple response to these report, to the report is, management and monitoring costs associated with the landfill will not go away if the transfer station is moved to a new location. Two, the environmental liability will remain, although discussions with DES, that HDS officials do not contemplate further action presently. Three, future development at the landfill will address environmental liabilities and avoid work in areas of known contamination. Four, development of contaminated properties has been a focus of both EPA and the Hampshire DES for the last twenty years through their respective ground fields programs that focus on redeveloping and reusing contaminated properties instead of developing new greenfield properties.
So brownfields, that would be something like the Tannery over in Bosco Lynn in Pennebrook, where they?
Play around.
Yeah.
So why don't we just continue on talking about solid waste committee? So, as, as I said to Megan, as I read that report, clearly to me, there was an agenda present, and despite the fact that, that we started the report off saying there's no agenda here, there clearly was. The person who supposedly wrote the report has no background, to my knowledge. So I'm just unhappy that, that this report was generated and apparently disseminated without anyone's, apparently the solid waste committee was unaware that it was in the, in the. And you just wanted a solid waste committee meeting?
Yes.
Right, after that came out, I think, correct?
Well, it was, the report was, I guess, sent to us on Friday, and then was handed out at the meeting on that following Monday, and discussed with the committee then. And I think most members were not aware that that was coming. I don't, I don't know if the chair was or not, but I think most members were not aware that this report was, was coming. And I know that certain parts of the report are, you know, again, and certain parts of the report have pages that are taken from Ares documents. I am unsure of the context, the way they're presented in that report. Again, I'm, I'm not the engineer or the, the water specialist, so you know, I hear words like contamination, and I don't know what that means. Does that just mean it's present? Or as, you know, I've talked with Megan, does it mean that you're living on, you know, a, a toxic waste dump? There's, there's a, there's a range, and I can't tell from that report what that range is. And I, it feels like, from the introduction to it, that it's, it's, it's more skewed towards the scary than the helpful.
And if we go back to our budget prep process for last year, the chairman of the solid waste committee appeared with a $2 million warrant article that we knew nothing about, and apparently he had taken upon himself to go look at property around exit eighteen. So, you know, it's, it's, I would certainly call that obstructionist. You know, we spend to, seem to spend our time battling the solid waste committee, and I'm frustrated by it.
Well, I can see the importance of them having their opinion about a new, a new transfer station, and I can see why they would have good reasons for thinking it. What I have a problem for is how they got from point A to point B, because it is, it is not reflected, as far as I can see, in the discussions of the last two years. There were many discussions about bags and stickers and labels and, and processes, but that wasn't-
But the solid waste committee, right, but they're not supposed to be the ones telling us to move from that cell.
No, but their discussion was, was balanced on that, and it was only at the very eleventh hour that the, the, the prospect of moving the transfer station was referenced in their minutes.
Right.
And due diligence might be cited, but I don't see it. And that makes me cautious, because where did those discussions take place if they weren't taking place in their meetings?
Right, they're not reflected in the minutes.
So, no, they're not, until, until like October of 2024.
Right.
And, and the, the previous meeting, it was just a mention, so to me, it's very, so that's why I have, not that it's not valid to look at moving the transfer station, but I don't see how that committee came to that conclusion.
Right.
And at no point in any of the discussions were this report or anything that might have been found in this report. It was just, you know, it's an uncapped landfill and we can't build there, but nothing else was mentioned. And, you know, the fact that they were told they couldn't build there, again, there was no reference to who told them that they couldn't build there. And when was this, there's a lot here that's, that doesn't have times or people. So that, so that's my, that's my concern with the, the process of this committee, that I don't see the evidence of how they got to their conclusion. It just, it doesn't show. They may say it, but I don't see it, so that's my concern.
Yep.
I'm also concerned when you get calls and you hear murmurs within thirty-six hours of the report coming out, of the concerns that people have and not being able to have a report presented, there was no, you were at the meeting, was it, was it, I, I don't know, was it presented, was it put in front of you and walked away?
Yes, we have the, this is a very nice, I have a copy for you, a very nice forty-page, fifty-page report that was prepared and copied and printed and found at some expense to the person who presented it at that meeting.
I just guess the way that that information gets spread and manipulated very rapidly, especially in a small town, you know, you talk about the panic factor, the potential skewing of, of opinion or view, it's very easily how that can go south, and, and you're, you're creating an issue that doesn't necessarily need to be created, you know? I don't understand PFAS numbers, I'm not a scientist, all right, I'm a carpenter, I don't, I don't know that X, Y, and Z equals, but I can, I can look it up and I can read it and I can try to, read the report. But if I don't have Ares or a subject matter expert explaining to me to say, hey, eighty-eight part per million is elevated, but the acceptable tolerance is a hundred, and again, I'm making those numbers up. If you just see elevated, you, you kind of panic.
No, that's what I mean, there's a difference between yes, it's there, and oh my god.
And can we mitigate, or how do we mitigate?
Yeah.
Is it safe to mitigate? Like, I, I just, that's the part of the, the, the last, you know, couple months of solid waste is sort of bothering me is the way that it's being operated, the information's getting out or being projected, and it hasn't really been discussed with us, or, you know, I, I knew nothing of that report until Friday, I think, when we got the email.
Right, and, and no one else did?
Right, and I figured we'd have a chance to discuss it way in before it became kicked out to the, to the world to see, so it's, that's tricky.
Well, and it's, and it's, again, as we've all learned recently, that if you're going to present this in a public meeting, it's, it's a public record. Anybody could have, I mean, they were somewhat hesitant about perhaps talking about it outside of the meeting, but at that point, it's a, we weren't using the Zoom, but anybody could have zoomed in, anybody could have walked in the door. It's a public meeting, that's the point. So this is now public information that, that I think, I think feels like it was shared a lot more willingly than perhaps the other discussions about moving the transfer station. This, this kind of, this dropped, but other information, you know, wasn't brought to the select board. As you say, it wasn't, we weren't presented with plans. There's certain things in here that, you know, our improvement plan at the time was denied. And I said, and I, my first question is, well, what improvement plan? And who was, who was it presented to, and when was it denied? Because none of that is documented either that, that I found, so that's, that's my issue.
The only improvement plan that I was aware of my first year on the select board, there was a plan to build a cover, if you will. And, and that year, the bill, I believe, was eighty-some thousand dollars, I can't remember the exact.
Oh, to put the roof over the, the, the limits to keep people dry when they were doing?
Put the roof over the, yeah. Correct.
Recycling.
And that didn't survive the, the budget process, so.
What year was that?
Had to be 2023, I believe.
Really?
Do you remember?
No.
Counting backwards on papers, I'm quick.
Yeah, I think it was twenty-three or, maybe twenty-three, twenty, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. What, what may contribute to the conversation is the mission statement and the charge from the board of selection. Yeah. Right, do you have the mission statement there? I do.
In one of those folders, older news is the proposed one, I saw.
So this is the one that they've apparently made up for themselves.
Is that the redline one, so you've seen what the changes are?
Nope.
Okay.
A lot.
So, do you want me to read the, the current one?
Mission of the solid waste committee shall be to advise the board of selectmen on all aspects of municipal waste affecting the town of Canterbury and to monitor and make recommendations regarding the town's activities relating to environmental issues associated with solid waste disposal which affect or impact the residents of the town of Canterbury. Committee shall also investigate methods of recycling, waste stream reduction, household hazardous waste collection, and consider new technologies for handling municipal solid waste. The committee shall be comprised of representatives from the board of selectmen, transfer station, and volunteers from the town of Canterbury who have an interest in preserving the environmental quality of life in the town. The committee shall strive to take an integrated approach to addressing waste management with educated opportunities while balancing the concerns of the citizens of Canterbury. And this was signed by the board of selectmen and the members of the solid waste committee in 2016. And it was a, the committee charge was analyze a report on the current solid waste and recycling program in Canterbury, make recommendations on how to improve our current program based on industry best practices, identify needed capital improvements to the Canterbury transfer station facilities and equipment, investigate and outline a long-term plan for Canterbury based on the potential closing of the millerator Technologies Waste to Energy Facility in Concord, produce a cost versus benefit analysis of recycling in Canterbury, identify needed changes in Canterbury's recycling program to maximize cost savings, update the Canterbury Solid Waste Transfer Station and recycling ordinance.
Sounds like a very complete go-to, to-do list.
It was, and, and both the mission statement and the charge were put together from representatives of the board of selectmen, myself, and the committee, and the old recycling committee.
Which, the, the bones of which the solid waste committee was, was built upon.
Correct. And, and it was changed from the recycling committee to the solid waste committee because the board of selectmen at the time, and I, I have minutes from the select's meeting where they made the changes, felt that they, the committee should be a wide- felt that they, the committee should be a widen their view, so to speak, not just recycling, but the whole solid waste and the facility, um, and education.
So that, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, it's, it's public allowed to comment, I don't want to.
True, oh, yeah.
I have.
Of course.
Are there bylaws for this, the same like the elective boards? There should be, because you have a process problem, a process problem. This should be, their advisory capacity should be, you know, when they, you get a new select board, they come in and say, here, you know, the priorities that we've identified, um, based on public comment, people have said, oh, I want covering over my head when it rains, or whatever people bring to them, um, as kind of the, the catch-all for any emails and things, probably taking the workload off of you for anything related to transfer station. And then, um, they come before the board and say, here are the priorities we'd like to look into for this year. Are there any you would like us to look into in addition or anything you'd like to take off that list? Great, I have my strategic plan and my marching orders. We're gonna look into, how do we get rid of plastic bags? We're going to look into, what does it cost if we need to cover people from rain? Um, if you want them to look into what's the cost of tapping a landfill. If you don't, that's not, that's not their prerogative to just do, right? It's a, they're an advisory board, so you tell them what you need advising on. And then they do the behind-the-scenes work to come back to you and say, here's what we advise based on what we've found, and here's where we found it. And it's all in public care, that's how this should go.
And, and that's, and that's the kind of information that I don't feel we are getting, um, from, from the committee. Um, there, there is, you know, a lot, there is much discussion about things, but, you know, I haven't seen, and I'd have to go back to look, you know, what have they presented to the select board as far as, as plans or ideas? Or, you know, as you say, you got so far along with the vending machine, but then it wasn't, that wasn't followed up. Um, you know, there are things like, um, um, the, um, you know, like the concern about the packer truck at the, at the transfer station, much discussion about it, but never have I seen anywhere that this solid waste committee has brought up the New Hampshire Clean Diesel Grant Program. And they're, you know, this, the whole program to get grants particularly to reduce these diesel emissions. You know, I wouldn't think that that would be something that, that that committee would, would bring to us. So, yeah, I think there's a big process problem, um, how we go about.
And so I asked about bylaws, having them have bylaws that delineate what the process is and they, then they have standards.
Yeah.
They don't go outside of that process. You come before the board, you advise, we give you your marching orders, that's how this works.
And the, um, and a good to-do list.
Yep.
I would agree. So, um, going forward, our next meeting is, I think we are still having one on the twenty-sixth of the month.
Solid Waste Committee is.
Solid Waste Committee is, um.
The meeting on Memorial Day.
They took a poll of the members and who said they would be there and they're going to be enough. As far as I know, they're going to be enough. Um, not the secretary. Um, I'll be there and I think three of them then.
Which time is it?
Three thirty.
Because we have, we have cookies here in the morning.
In the morning?
Yeah.
So you'll be in the center.
That is also.
And you may be at La Crosse.
But I have three days off, don't jinx me.
Oh, okay, okay. So, uh, so anyway, I think, um, I think I don't know what the agenda is for that meeting, but it should be, uh, an agenda item should be from the Board of Selectmen, um, covering this.
Well, I, I guess I'm looking for everybody's opinion, is, is this fixable? Or do we eliminate the Solid Waste Committee and move on to something different?
It's tough because in a sense, you, having an advisory committee in that capacity does alleviate a lot of the work. But if it's causing more headaches than results, it sort of eliminates the point of having the committee. It's not gonna work in the confines of what it's established to do. And it's not really existing in, in its capacity.
We had two more articles presented last year, one was not doable for sixty-five thousand dollars, wasn't it? Can I have that, that amount?
Sixty-five thousand dollars.
For the back, yeah.
We, we couldn't have done it even if it passed. Um, it would have been another, probably two hundred thousand to run three phase up there. I'm not sure disturbing the ground to put the pad in, that was a good idea, it was a bad idea.
But that's still something to be decided still from Aries, correct? We haven't heard the.
That, that's part of the scope of the work.
Their feasibility, right, yeah, so that's.
Correct, okay, the study.
Of the work I put in dig it.
Right, and then another one article on something that the select board agreed to because, but because the person didn't trust us, he decided to submit a one article himself, which he withdrew on the floor in town. So I, you know, I, I can't battle with him anymore, that's, that's my frustration.
I have a, I would hate to just, with people who do, are concerned and have shown up and have some knowledge of the situation in town, to just say enough. I personally would say if we can come up with a clear set of bylaws and a marching order and say, this is what we want. And then you, you as a committee can either choose to do that or not. And I think that might be, that might be very clear. If you have certain people who say, that's not what we want to do, we just want to move the transfer station and nothing else, and we're not going to do this stuff, then our decision is made. But personally, there are people on that committee who care and have expertise and energy. And if we can get processes and thing, and if they will do it, I'd be willing to, to stay, stay with that group and, and work with it. But I think it's going to be up to that committee to decide. And, and quite frankly, I, I can't say at this point what they may say.
Can we constitute a leadership change in the committee? Can you try to address the, the issue at, at the head? If, I mean, not to single anybody out, but.
I don't see the chair of the committee.
Maybe he has the chair.
Yeah, so we can't, we can't. I'm just curious, is it, if, if everything's kind of going back to a certain, a certain point, you know, is, is altering that point going to help the committee? Maybe it'll rejuvenate it, maybe it'll give a new perspective, a new drive, a new direction, and maybe it'll correct itself. Um, I definitely think we do need to have our input and sort of reestablish the rules and the ground game. But can it exist the way it is? Maybe, maybe not.
Well, we don't know that until we.
Well, we don't know that, exactly.
Until we tried that. And I think Scott, um, I mean, saying, you know, you serve at the pleasure of the select board is one thing, but saying, this is what the select board really wants, this is what you are charged with doing, and make it painfully clear. Kind of like our discussion with Mr. Davis from Buella.
Yep.
You know, you may say you don't know what you're expected to do, but we're going to make it painfully clear that this, these are the, these are the steps and these are the rules. And, um, maybe that's our, um, our, our fault not to have made it more clear. I think it kind of developed a life of its own, but I think we're past that point. It needs to be reestablished who, what, what the select board would like them to do for the town. Because I'm not sure how helpful what they've been doing is.
That, that committee can be a valuable asset, especially where we're facing taxes, what do we do with the future? It's trash pickup chief, there's a lot of things that they can cover and learn and inform us on and definitely alleviate the workforce. And they're also, you know, able to reach out to the community. But if, if they're not, if they're so fixated on one result, it doesn't benefit anybody, you know?
Right.
No, I would agree, I would agree. And even, you know, the discussion came up when it was first presented, okay, so maybe, um, if indeed we decided to go and move the transfer station, we can't do it for four years for building, what are you doing for the town in that four years? You know, let's focus on something simple, how about getting guys a bathroom? That came up in discussion four years ago and it hasn't been pursued. Yeah, let's find out about, you know, construction trailers. Well, where is your presentation about construction trailers with bathrooms and things? You know, things get presented and it sounds great, but, but the, but the follow-up hasn't, um, hasn't happened.
So maybe we just need to be more direct, you know, treat them like six-year-olds, you know, tell them what you want and, and get the results. It's what you do with my kids, right? No, I'm not saying they're six-year-olds, but I'm saying you just, we give them a direction and say, these are the goals we need you to achieve, let's achieve them, and then we, then we go to the next one. Maybe we need to be more deliberate in our ask and, and cut it down. You know, rather than having a spectrum, let's say we need A, B, C, not A through Z this week.
Yeah.
You know, let's direct the energies and see if it becomes more positive.
Slow one, I guess.
Yeah.
All right, so.
That sounds like process.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Uh, do you know, well, um, there is no, just, you know, there's no RSA about, uh, committees needing to appoint their own chairs. That is inherently up to you. I'm just letting you know. The only, uh, RSAs regard, um, planning boards applying board day because they're an elected board and budget committee. They, they have to do their own chair appointments, but advisory committees, there is no RSA that sits with the select board in the town.
Well, it was, um, no, I won't be able to find that. Well, you know, according to the committee themselves, they are informal and advisory and, yeah, we need, um, I think more advising. Um, so what would our timeline be for getting something to them to say, this is what, well, when, when might we hear back from? Let's start with, let's back up a little bit, when might we hear from Aries about the feasibility?
Um, George said today that he, uh, has most of the information. The hangup right now is waiting for Unitil. Because that was, uh, part of it was the, was the estimate to get three phases.
Right.
Three phases.
Okay.
So he's waiting for them. Um, we did meet with them on site. I have the letter that they sent us, uh, back in two thousand fifteen, with, and I sent that to the new representative.
Mm-hmm.
So he, and he was gonna have the engineers look at it. So waiting for Unitil. And George asked for, uh, contact information for an electrician, um, that we might use, um, to do the work up there, uh, on the interior of the building if, if we did get three phases. He wanted to talk to him about the requirements of, uh, whether we're gonna need a new entrance, uh, things like that. Technical questions that he wasn't sure of and I wasn't sure of.
Interesting.
Larry Martin is the one that did, uh, put the new, the new entrance up there a couple of years ago. So I was gonna give him Larry's name. I know Larry's not running his business anymore, but, uh, he is knowledgeable about the facility. So I'll send him Larry's contact information.
Will, um, the feasibility study deal with anything that's been brought up in this report? Or is that not part of the charge? And should it be?
Probably not, because I don't believe that was in the scope of the work that we asked him to look into.
Okay.
I, well, I guess the, the scope was, and I guess the, the purpose, the scope spelled out that whether it was a feasibility to stay there and make improvements or not.
Right.
Right.
So my guess is that during that, during this, this study that they're going to look at is to look at the, the contamination and everything else that goes along with it and say, uh, you know what, there's, there's too much going on up there and it's gonna cost you guys way more than it's worth to do anything, so you're better off to buy a piece of land somewhere else. Or you can do this for this amount of money on this piece of property. You know, because we asked them about storage for, um, for recycling. We asked them about the, the three-phase power, and we asked about improved facilities for the employees.
Right.
So those are the three major things that he's gonna look into, what can be done up there and where it can be done, if it can be done.
Right.
And so they'll put together, they've designed transfer stations, so they have that ability to determine, you know, and, and they got all the information of how many tons of recycling we produce every year, how many tons of solid waste we produce every year. He's toward the facility, they've been up there for twenty years now, looking at it, testing and everything like that. So they're very familiar with the facility. And, um, we have, I gave them the traffic count that we did a few years ago up there. Um, I, I, I think we've given them more than enough information to help them make.
And he obviously has this in, in any day to.
He has this report now, I think he has enough information to produce some kind of, uh,
Response.
You know, uh, yeah, and, and, and determination and suggestion on, on which way the town goes.
Okay.
So really, I think the, what we're waiting on, I'm sorry, maybe, did you have something?
Can I put my planning board hat on? Something I think the planning board might be interested in, and I haven't talked to the chair about this, so I'm not speaking out of turn. Um, but just, I've not heard about what the feasibility study will be about. But, uh, some insight into how much more, the site as it is, how much more traffic can that handle? Because development, more people in town. At what point does it become unsustainable, we can't fit everything here?
Yeah.
Would be interesting to know estimates, you know?
Good question, yeah. Yeah. Uh, and didn't, uh, the dump road was on this year's traffic count?
It is, it is.
So, so we're actually gonna freshen that number up, how many visits it's getting.
Mm-hmm, but how many more can it, same thing we know with school, how many more students can we take before we're gonna incur costs?
Right, yeah.
How many more, how many more, I don't know, tons of waste or people coming through can we take?
That's a good question. Right, right. Um, so I'm thinking, um, short term, while we're waiting for the, the study to finish, do we give them a focused assignment such as stickers for the bags, stickers instead of bags? I mean, you know, it really is.
They did, they did rather exhaustive, um, discussion on that, they should have all the numbers at hand.
And yet, here I sit unaware that they have done either.
Well, see, because it wasn't presented.
It was never, right, information, they never, you know, they don't wanna blame them because we had a selectman's rep. But, you know, the information has to come back here in order for us to take action, so.
Um, and I guess my, another question I would think of, uh, too, actually, is, so what, what is actually their purpose for meeting on Monday? If we're kind of on hold for waiting for the feasibility study and they've got no other pots in the fire for things that they're looking at other than moving.
I think he was gonna, I, I, I was at the meeting and I think that they're going to discuss
Yeah, yeah.
the results of the Household Hazardous Waste Day.
Oh, that's right, I forgot that that's happening in the interim.
And that was the, that was the pocket agenda item, that was a recap of, of what's gonna happen on Saturday.
Yeah. All right.
Right, because that's what.
That makes sense, I forgot about that.
I think that's why he wanted to meet that day.
Yeah.
Um, while it's still fresh in their minds and.
Okay, that makes sense.
Having invented that, you know, that's what I thought, that, that he had thought that that's why they wanted to meet on that, that one day.
Um, but, um, okay, that, that makes perfect sense. I forgot about the Household Hazardous Waste Day, though it's on my calendar four different ways.
Hmm.
Um, so after that, um, the next meeting is not going to happen because Rich is traveling. So then, excuse me, wrong June.
So I guess is it a committee of one person? Why can't we meet if he's traveling?
Because there's no vice chair.
They don't have any vice chair.
They don't have any vice chair and didn't seem particularly interested, or at least, uh, Rich didn't express any particular interest. They just didn't do it, yeah.
And then what if Rich gets sick?
Well, that's a good question, uh, which is something else that might be in their, um, in bylaws and processes, how do you, uh, how are you organized? Because that seems like you could use some.
So I, I would argue we decide how to organize.
Yes.
And, and I would like to insist that you point a vice chair. If nobody objects, like, it's.
Every other board and committee has one.
It, it seems reasonable to, to, so that they can continue to do things if Rich isn't there.
Right.
If they have work to do. So after, after the discussion of household hazardous waste on the twenty-sixth, um,
Stickers.
Well, I I've, yeah, but but that's just like the the least, I mean, I think it would be, okay, the next meeting, we are going to present to you, um, perhaps a a basic process and a basic way to organize yourself. And going forward, this is what we, don't just say stickers, but going forward, this is what we want. We can, we, I know what you mean. We could come up with a list of, you know, the charge right there is, I mean, even something as simple as, okay, every month, put something in the newsletter about what's going on at the transfer station to help the people of this town use it more effectively. I mean, I do that myself, but that's just because I do the newsletter and if there's a hole, I fill it with stuff like that people should know.
Yeah.
Um, we didn't get the information about asking for volunteers for Guilford foam recycling out to the town from the committee, but things like that should be.
Yeah.
So, um, I think the next thing might be, okay, and maybe the maybe the committee takes a pause. Be until after the Aries report comes back and we have a chance to
A direction.
to think of a direction. And and quite frankly, they should be able to say, okay, in lieu of building a whole new transfer station and fulfilling our charge, this is what we wanna do and we're going to make a report to you on these topics.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think we can say, this is what we're gonna do, but this is what we need from you as well.
Yeah.
And that might be the next meeting.
Yeah.
When Rich is back in town. And by that time, hopefully we'll have enough time to get, um, to get our list of what we would like them to do. We don't obviously have it by the twenty-sixth.
Nope.
And we're not gonna talk about it anyway.
Right, so why don't we put that on our agenda for the next? And we can be thinking of between now and then, ideas, so.
You want short-term ideas, long-term ideas?
I think short-term, yeah. My my thought is, um, everything may change when when we get Aries report. If if the report says we should be looking at new sites, then that's gonna change everything. Alright.
So we're not, so I'm trying to think of what meeting we're not having, I don't think we're
The ninth.
The ninth is we're not, because that's when so the next is the twenty-sixth, which is going to be the recap of the uh household hazardous waste day. Their next meeting is the twenty-third of June. And we have a meeting on the sixteenth.
Yeah.
So we should be
So we should, yeah.
That that timing works.
So if, um, and we meet again also on the twenty-second. Thursday, this week.
Right, that's correct, this week, yeah.
And can we add to this work session, which is all about insurance, correct? Yes?
How much time do you wanna spend there?
Yeah, what did you wanna add?
I just want
Insurance is gonna be a lengthy discussion, yeah.
Okay, never mind. I I was going to say, Jess, do we wanna um uh make a stab at a first thought of uh look at the charge for that committee and see
Unfortunately, I've got another appointment at like eleven, so.
Supposed to template countertops in Center Harbor at one.
Okay, then forget that. So how about this, how about I look at the charge um that we've read and come up with a with a my best guess at what would be a good um step-by-step for the committee and send that to us all
Yeah. Yeah.
to look at on the second of June.
Alright, until we stay to clock.
And one thing, Cal, could you do me a big favor because you were really helpful at doing an action item list at one point? Could you put that action item so I remembered that I just said I would do that and so I will do it? And I'll write it too.
I I have a note here to email you guys to develop a list of goals and timeline for the solid waste committee
Okay.
for the next
Yeah.
Thank you.
on the second meeting, so I'll send that email.
Eric, thank you.
Perfect, it always helps to have eight people we want in to do something, thank you, always appreciated.
Right. Yeah. Cal, do we have appointment slips here, blank ones?
Uh, not, no, but I can make one, if you want, I can make one for Megan and you guys can, if you come sign it on hers.
Sign it on Thursday. Sign it on Thursday. I I, it's not necessary for you to come back. We'll we'll sign appointment slip, we've got a work session Thursday morning at nine about employee health insurance. So Cal will make the slip out, it it won't be
It's ripping. It's scintillating, come on, get the right, get the right word here.
So we'll sign the appointment slip then, um, and and you'll be on the solid waste committee.
Oh, you guys need to vote on that?
No, actually, that's one of the things we don't vote on, we just sign, each of us signs.
Oh, okay.
You need two out of three, I think you'll be okay. Um, and and then it's up to you if you wanna come to a Memorial Day Solid Waste Committee meeting. Um, I'd rather be just about anywhere, but, um.
No, I think I think it'll be good, that'll be a, that'll be a first step to, um, seeing one if the committee is open to uh change. And direction, let's put it that way, if they are open to direction. And, um, I think that's a good start.
I would I would say focus.
Focus.
Yeah.
Focus, that's an excellent, focus is a very good word.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Appreciate you spending a few hours with us anyway.
All these free hours I have, guys.
Yep. Alright. Alright, where do we need to go? Now we've got so much, do you wanna go back to signing and then
Might as well get on back to signing.
Yeah.
Going forward, we'll be able to
Thanks, thanks.
Yeah, good night.
Thanks, buddy.
Thanks, have a wonderful night.
Alright, first item is a cons payable manifest in the amount of fifty-six thousand nine hundred thirty-two dollars and twenty-six cents.
Uh, so moved.
Second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye. Can't sign it red pen, red on the cap, it's no good. Alright, I have to bake my signature.
Oh, I'll make it a three.
Hmm.
Thank you.
Yes.
Gotcha. Alright, next is a payroll manifest in the amount of fifty-five thousand seven hundred sixty-three dollars and twenty-eight cents.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Cal, who needs to sign the welfare manifest check?
Um, I think any of you can, cause you all have signing powers.
Okay. Yeah, okay, very good. Alright, uh, next is a welfare manifest in the amount of one thousand six hundred forty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents. I assume that's the ongoing
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And I'll just sign. Alright, here's that. Thank you. Alright, next is an interfund transfer. It looks like going from the operating account into the conservation commission fund in the amount of fourteen thousand seven hundred fifty-nine dollars.
So moved.
Then second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
That's going in, so that's like land use change taxes and stuff, okay, yeah.
Right.
Is our tax warrant there?
It is, we'll get into it, actually, here it is.
Thank God. I hate the kind of thing.
I don't want.
Sorry.
Alright, and the uh tax collector's warrant in the amount of four million two hundred ninety-six thousand two hundred forty-six dollars.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The numbers.
This is more scary than signing for the grader.
Yeah, the grader was a much smaller amount.
It already broke.
Yeah, I know, that's
Well, this is collecting, not spending.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point.
This is what, this is what you're gonna collect.
This is
This is right, it's gonna pay for all of the, the magic, yes. The grader and
So I'm just one, I wanna think about how I'm finding a quarter which you bought loose in a fuse box.
I got a good guess.
Yeah. Yeah. Alright, there's that. Alright, this is a job title, Ken, I'm guessing you've probably got something to say about it.
That's a job description for the recording secretaries for all boards.
Yeah.
Land use boards.
Land use boards, I'm sorry.
Right. So where
Land use boards.
Michelle's change of duties to the, um, land use professional, we need to replace her, right?
Uh, no.
No.
No, she is staying on as the planning board secretary.
I heard, okay.
Um, we never, well, we had a very, um, a different job description for recording secretary.
Gotcha, okay.
We talked with, uh, Jan, we talked with Michelle, uh, we talked with Lois Scribner before she left. And we got a whole bunch of input and then, uh, Cal condensed it all and had them, had them look at it and so they approved the shot, Jan brought was appropriate.
Good, okay, alright.
The goal is to try and be consistent.
Yeah.
So that's that's what this
Yeah.
job description is really all about.
And, um, switching topics for just thirty seconds, could we add to the list that the minutes from the solid waste committee should be done the way we want them done, not the way the chair of the solid waste committee wants them done?
I I think that that's, um, yes.
There is, I understand, been some remarks made about doing minutes differently from our standard format.
And I think, um, uh, it it makes it easier for, I mean, we talked about being consistent between boards and I think that
Correct.
that's one of the points, yes, I would agree with that. Uh, wait, wait.
Is Michelle the secretary of solid waste?
Yes.
Is she gonna continue to be?
As far as I know.
Okay. So she can just do it the same
Correct.
Yeah, so she can do it across the board because it's too confusing for her to try and do it the different way.
Yeah, exactly. Did Lisa have any say on this? Any who wasn't?
We, um, sent what, draft copy?
So, so she's seen it at least, okay.
I I think this looks good, though I I'm really bad at reading this much that this fast, but I just, yeah.
We can email that to you?
No, I think I would just be worried about leaving something out, not what's in here.
It can be changed at any time.
Oh, well then, that's, then that we need to just, we're adopting this, correct? It, I mean, from everything I've read, this is
Yeah, but we need to sign it.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Job descriptions can be updated anytime by the board as well. I think it hits on all the parts, it's concise.
It, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Since I have it, do, shall we pass it back and forth again?
Yeah, well, sure.
Though that seems, it seems like it's
Alright.
And I'm assuming we'll get a copy of this, um, do, do we already have a copy of it?
No, do you want a copy of that? You want a copy of all the job descriptions?
No, but I would like this one.
Oh, okay.
Alright.
Since we're discussing it and I just signed it, sure.
That's a seven. Alright, I think that brings us to the signature form for new bank account.
Oh, yes, for a trysome penny? No, oh.
No, this is for, it says transfer station.
Yeah, that is for the credit card machine at the transfer station.
This is exciting.
Credit card machine? The maybe you shouldn't say that. Solid Waste Committee, uh, that is one of the things that I was asked by the chair that the solid waste committee would like to have a credit card machine at the transfer station. I spoke with the transfer station manager, he did not object, um. Okay. So who needs the three percent, does it get tagged on here, twenty dollars bags? There will be a percentage that added on, there will be a sign, just like the town clerk has a sign at the town clerk's office, that if you choose to use a credit card, there's a a charge, a percentage charge to use it. Can you still use cash and check though? Pardon me? Can you still use cash and check? Yes.
Cash not over twenty dollars, is that right?
Twenty bucks, yeah. Well, no, can be over twenty dollars, it's just gonna, that would be a hundred dollar bill.
Right, right.
Oh, oh, alright, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't use the dump, so I apologize, I'm a little behind the eight ball.
And then the machine will be secured where, in Dave's office?
In the office.
Yeah.
Do I, do I recall correctly when this discussion first came up that we were going to basically try it for a year and see how it worked or how it was accepted or
I I think that was the discussion of the board of selectmen of one four months, was
Yeah.
let's try it out and see how it works, if it's a problem, then we have it.
Okay.
And and it's gonna be something, I I, we have to get together with the company that provides us yeah, machine and determine what their contract time is. And and we'll, we'll have a, have an open office.
It's probably not that different than when we got the credit card machine for the farmer's market and had to do the same thing. And they've got, um, they now have the wifi to support it there, okay, alright, well.
Yeah, and and, um, we had to set up a sep, we, well, we didn't have to, we wanted to set up a separate account.
Yeah.
So this is not, we're not intermingling funds.
Yeah.
Because the transfer station has, uh, a separate, we call it an enterprise fund. Our honor to tell us not to call it that, that's what we call it. I remember that actually, so.
Okay, so then, though, but that's good because then it makes it nice and clear where
And I guess the only other question is, why is Greg Heath signing?
He's the, uh
Trustee of trust funds.
Trustee of trust funds.
Oh, okay, that makes sense.
Chairman of the trustee of trust funds.
Okay, very good. Alright, next is a notice of intent to cut water timber for map two-two-three lot eight, which is twenty-six Briar Bush Road. Well, not according to this anyway, thirteen thirteen acres, it says.
Isn't that Kathy Hudson's?
Yes, that is correct.
They cut it the last two weeks.
Hmm.
I live right next to it.
Correct. So they've cut without the sign.
It's it's been hammered and stuff, they logged it all out.
Uh, okay.
That's what caused all the issues on Briar Bush Road for the month.
So
So is it okay if they've cut before the notice to intent is
So the law says that the selectmen do not have to sign these.
Mm-hmm.
And, but you can't prevent them from cutting.
Interesting.
So we didn't, obviously, since they already did, but
I I I I struggle with these all the time because at the end of the day, they're not required.
Hmm.
Interesting, is it just for timber tax purposes and that?
So it's a tax purposes is what it is, yeah, yeah, yeah. Hmm.
Yeah, that one's been cut, very interesting.
Is that what the big, I saw one picture of the road being such a mess, that was it?
The logging company, I guess, crushed the culprit.
And has the logging company fixed the culprit?
No.
Do we know about a crushed culprit on Briar Bush?
Um, I think, I I don't know about the crushed culprit on Briar Bush.
I heard, I heard it got run over at the end where it comes in the Happy Borough, underneath, they crushed the end of it.
I heard, I heard it got run over at the end where it comes in the hamper row, underneath, they crushed the end of it, they tried to fix it, and the road is still junk, little birdie.
So, Briar Bush Road flooded out,
Yeah.
because the beavers plugged up the culvert.
Okay.
The highway firemen went up there several times and pushed the beaver dam out of the culvert, and the property owner has now hired a trapper.
Hmm.
Should call me.
I can't hear about Trapp. Paul Pirate is still in business?
No, no.
Have we relocated the beaver? Oh, I got involved in this one another time.
They will be relocated.
They will be?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Don't know where they'll go, but they will be relocated.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, next is a yield tax levy warrant in the amount of one thousand seven hundred ninety-one dollars and ninety-six cents. What else do I need to read for this, Ken?
That's really, I mean, if you wanna, I think, is it the tax map and margin rule there?
Yes, uh, oh, only the fir-, I'm, I'm a little confused by the two below it that say no cut. The only amount is.
Okay, so, so the only one is, the only one that got cut is that first one?
Yup.
The other ones did not get cut, okay, so it's just that first, is that first one?
Uh, map two-sixty lot two. And we're just signing?
Yup.
All right, I think that brings us to minutes.
Who does?
There's, uh, two suggestions to go over. I think Scott has the only copy that has the suggestions written on it.
Yup.
Oh, okay, yeah. I was wondering.
Um, I have them written here, so I can read them out once, um, put them out.
Yeah, I'll let Calvin, uh, finish.
We, we gotta hit the second page too, right?
No.
If there's, I think that one has had two proposals.
Yeah, I believe one of these.
Glad one of these.
Seal packs, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you, good catch, Charlie.
We buy, you live, look at those things.
I'll tell Mandy not to use the yellow ones next time.
Yeah.
So I think blue is what you're going to.
Blue is, yeah.
Blue for the blue.
The universal symbol.
I'm here.
Thank you, Calvin.
Yes.
Welcome.
Very good.
You've done more than one.
There you go.
All right. Just, yeah, exactly. All right, so we're now looking at the draft minutes for the May fifth, twenty twenty-five meeting. Cal, do you wanna go over the corrections, or the changes?
Yes. Um, so there's one suggested change on line seventeen. Um, change shouldn't have paid to Fields or Paid in Error. Um, and then the second change is line thirty-one, and add to the very end of that line, um, once in two thousand six for his residence at one forty New Road, and again in two thousand nine for the two thousand eight tax year on the same residence. Um, and then there's one grammatical change, but those are the two, um, important ones, so.
Okay.
We're gonna, I know I just, I forgot to send those out until today, so.
Yeah, you sent them out earlier, huh?
Yeah.
Anybody have any other additions, subtractions, corrections?
No, since those two were from me, I'm all set.
All right, good, I'll make a motion that we improve the minutes as amended.
So moved.
All those in favor, or actually, second, and all those in favor.
Oh, aye.
Aye. Thank you, and return to Calvin, Sess.
Just that, just that one.
Oh, just that, okay, gotcha.
As that one, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that brings us down to, what do you wanna talk about, new business twenty-five Layton Drive tree cutting?
Yup.
Yeah, what's that?
Uh, let me give them a question for us. Uh, I got an email from the, uh, owners of twenty-five Layton Drive.
Oh, no, no, it's not, it's, um.
They have a couple of dead trees on their property that are a butt, um, a common property. When, when Cambridge Layton were laid out, uh,
Yeah.
they were required, the town, the playing board required them to, uh, preserve open space.
Correct.
That open space, uh, if you look at the tax ma-, tax map, is not owned by anybody.
Interesting.
However, they were supposed to start an association, and to best of our knowledge, they don't have one. But, anyway, uh, twenty-five Layton, the highlighted portion is here, this, this section here is all the common land, and, um, so twenty-five is right here,
Yup.
and they have, there's a couple of dead trees, one is definitely on the common land, and one is on their property. They will pay to have the trees removed, they're dead, but they don't, apparently they, I don't know whether they're in danger of falling on something or what, but they had, um, a tree cutter come and look out, and they said that they would, they'd cut it down, and they're willing to pay for it, but they, they want the town's permission, um.
So I guess we're giving permission.
Yeah, no one owns it, then, and, and that's the thing, it's called common land, and that's what it's called in here.
Yeah.
Um, it, it, I talked to Mandy about it that day, I'm like, well, who owns it? It's, well, nobody, nobody owns it.
Yeah.
Um, but because they were required by the town to have open space, and there was no association, then probably the town should be the ones to say.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a couple of dead trees, you know, one's on, one's on the line, one's on the property line, you can't see.
The owners approached me the other day, and they were just unsure of how to proceed, because they wanted to make, they, and they are willing to pay.
Yeah.
They just wanted to make sure they were doing it properly, but they needed to know.
Yeah, they didn't wanna get trouble from the town to make sure.
Yeah, so, and, you know, if it fell, or I guess there might be questions or whatever, but they just wanted to make sure.
Gotcha, anybody have any objections, Calvin? Yeah, I'm.
Okay.
No, no, not at all, that's their, especially if they're willing to pay for it, which I think is generous on their part.
Yup.
Uh, they just wanna make sure that it doesn't fall on their house or someone else's.
Right. Right. All right, old business, Louis Audette abatement.
Yup. So,
Do we have that?
I have the abatement package there, um, Beth and Calvin and Scott were all in to look at and review
Yup.
most of the documents, um, you guys are all familiar with this.
Yup.
Um, so, we told Mr. Audette he would have some questions, Mandy got everything that you got asked for, and, um, I think it's all there.
So this was my, my, the, the, the piece of information I wanted most was that what happened, um, in two thousand and six for the amount, I know we saw what the value of the land was, how it went up, but what I really wanted to see is what Mr. Audette actually had to write a check for, to pay.
Yup.
So in, you know, in, um, the begin, the end of two thousand and six, it was two hundred and twenty-eight dollars on that land, and the next bill that he actually wrote a check for was eighteen hundred and twenty. So that was still, two thousand and six was the year he went for the abatement on his own, but this didn't raise a flag to him.
Yup.
And, I'm sorry, and then it went up, it just stayed for the year, it was twenty-two hundred, basically, year
Yup.
going forward, but, you know, that kind of jump, to have willingly written the check and made it, um, and, and gone through the process of getting abatement on his residence, but not questioning this, I, I don't, um, I don't think that that is a problem that, um, is ours.
Calvin, where are you?
I'm, I'm in a Grange property debt on this one, I, I think that, you know, negligence by not doing any due diligence over the years, you know, how are we supposed to forgive that? Be responsible and pay your taxes by allocating my bills, you know, and wait twenty years to address it. That's a turkey one, yeah.
And I think the town, as soon as it was brought to the town's, um, attention, corrected it right away. So again, at that time, if he had questioned, well, why did it go up that much? Um,
Yeah.
I think all the information he needed to, to know what was going on was provided. And, and again, he gets his mail, he reads his mail, and he knows how to come in and ask for an abatement.
Yeah.
And just, for whatever reason, that we can't say, didn't do it there,
Right.
and add a substantial increase, so. I would also take the, um, advice of our assessor, and I think that.
Yeah, and I would note that the RSA requires him to show good cause, and I don't think he showed that, so. I'm in favor of denying the abatement request as well. Do we need a motion, Ken, or we just say?
Yes.
Okay. So looking for a motion to deny the abatement request.
So moved.
All right, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
So what's your answer? And we need to just sign in that one spot, what says?
See, there's one blue.
Just wanna make sure.
Yeah.
And, uh, I assume the town will send Mr. Audette a letter?
Yes.
And as I understand the process, he can appeal our decision, is the, um, is that information retained or only the letter?
Yeah, we'll, we'll send all that, yeah.
And does he come back and just appeal to us, or does that appeal somewhere else?
No, yeah, state land board, uh, would be his next step.
EPLA.
Okay.
Or land use.
Okay.
All right, Canterbury representative to CPC NH.
Uh, we do, we had a very brief meeting after the, uh, Hamaian Performing Arts
Okay.
group concert, um, and it is, uh, the committee at the moment basically is made up of, of Fred Portnoy and Tim Mead, and myself as board of selectmen rep,
Yup.
and I don't think anybody has still found or heard from John Schneider as far as he is on the committee or not.
Right, yeah.
So he is in the wind.
Okay.
So it is those two gentlemen and myself. Uh, neither Fred nor Tim is interested in being either the secretary of the committee or the chair. So, um, uh, I'm not sure the procedure of it, but at the moment, I'm kind of secretary. In, only in that I'm willing to notice the next meeting and do the agenda, and the, the sum total will be, okay, how is this committee going forward?
Right.
Um, it is, can it go forward with anything other than
Right.
interfacing with the New Hampshire CCPC?
Yeah.
It doesn't look like it, but, um, we do have two candidates who might want to, Edgar, I have a, I have information for you um, about the process, and Beth McGuinn has also stepped forward to be, um, liaison between the town and, um, why can't I ever get that, there's a CC, the, the Community Power New Hampshire
Right.
uh, organization, so, um, I will send all those, um, the information I got from Tom Franco about the process to both Edgar and Beth, and to Fred and to Tim,
Sure.
and we are going to talk about that on the, the next meeting is. Wait, I put down I'm gonna notice it, but I didn't put down when the meeting is.
No, but I, I think the logical discussion is the dissolving the committee.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it, I think it's, it's time has come, if, if the two members that are continuing to come aren't interested in doing anything other than attending meetings.
Right.
Um, that's a much different committee than, than I serve on.
Yes, the, the brain, the brain trust has disappeared, and it's, and the, the solid wa-, the solid waste committee, the, um, CCPC and the energy committee seem to have flipped places. The energy committee now has a couple of new numbers, it's revised, they have a plan, they have stuff they wanna do, um, and how, and, and Fred is still involved with Soul Smart,
Yup.
but I think that's all he wants to do, and I, I don't really know Tim's intention, but I think the next meeting will just be more formal, uh, it'll be noticed, it'll have an agenda, it will, will be there, and
Yeah.
I think that, you know, we'll, we'll be able to hear from, by that point, hopefully from Edgar and Beth,
Yup.
um, what they intend to do as far as being representatives to the state organization and go from there.
I, I believe we need representation at that group, um,
Yeah.
by some, but, but it certainly, you know, from the sounds of it, isn't going to be, uh, be, uh.
No. Oh, well, and, and Beth was also very clear that she would be willing to be the, the liaison, but didn't want to be either chair or necessarily be on CCPC, but would just be
I understand, yeah.
Yeah, the person behind the, and, and Edgar, you know, you can, you can talk about that later, about, you know, whether you wanna actually be part of the committee, or again, like Beth, just be a liaison.
Right.
That's a, that's a discussion, you know, you'll be invited to that meeting as well.
Yeah.
So, we can discuss that then, but that's the sum total of what that report will have at that meeting.
All right, so more to, more to come, I guess, where we leave that.
Yes, yes. So that'll be noticed, I'll notice it.
Yup. Okay. All right, um, Sam Lake House Garage renovation bids.
Yeah.
We got the two bids, um, could you just refresh our memory on?
So I have, you guys had some questions, I asked you to email me your questions, and I did not receive anything.
Yup. Correct.
There were crickets, for which, there were apologies.
I understood.
Can I give you the, the, um, bids again, if you wanna look at them again, or?
Does anybody feel they need to look at them again?
Um, I don't, and I had, my two comments were, I thought, um, how do you say, the gelatinous, no.
Galatas.
Galatas, uh, Galatas would be, um, my pick for the two contractors, because he has worked in town before, and I thought his presentation was more complete. Um, he did scope out a lot of, Galatas is correct, the, that went point by point through everything he was going to provide to the, yeah.
But the, the other contractor's known to us as well.
Yeah, he was known to Boscoon, and he's known to the, but what I, I like his present.
The other contractor was also hired by the town of Boscoon to rebuild, renovate their, um, highway garage for the street, too.
Oh, all right.
So, just, I mean, just, you know, you, you know, just, as a point, just, but no.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I mean, I think.
Reputation is, is fairly good, Boscoon hired him, so.
For me, I, it was, it was, I didn't have a strong feeling one or the other, except on the basis of the presentation and that he outlined very carefully, you know, to me, anyway, not knowing, not knowing my other choices, what he wanted to use and what he would propose. He was fifteen hundred dollars more, however, as far as the, um, electrical contractors, I would go with the true, what was the other name, the, um,
Trusted?
Trusted, um, they were fifteen hundred dollars less, but they also said they would dig the trench. And being that our highway department is usually strapped for other projects at any given time, um, I wouldn't wanna have to put that on their docket too, so I would certainly go with them. The contractors for me was kind of a toss-up, but.
Yeah, so both are essentially the same, though, if, if one is fifteen hundred more than, and the other, yeah, I get you.
Yeah.
Just another question would be is, do, do we give this to the HDC to see if they have questions, as they brought up at their last meeting, um, if they could have, I guess, a look or a say as to what.
So I sent the scope to the chair, and I never got anything back.
Okay.
I said, here's the scope, do you have any comments, and nothing.
Okay.
So.
Right, you had your chance.
Very straight.
He can try, he can try his best
I tried.
to get information out of people.
I should note if they saw the proposals or not, is what I'm saying, if they had any, if they weighed any comment.
I did not send them the proposals, no, no. I figured the scope of work was descriptive enough of, of what you were asking the contractors to bid on, and
Right.
and they both followed what they said the scope would be, so.
Yeah.
And it'll be, it'll, it'll match, and
Yeah.
my only, my only thing was looking at the roofs, um, you know, that the roofs match, the roofing material, and you know, he did quote for a, a slate, what, a faux slate, uh, that's what it works.
So, there's, there's a couple of things on, on Galatas, where he gives you some options.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Synthetic slate would be an additional eighty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
The cement siding, the Hardy siding board would be an additional eighteen thousand dollars, eighteen thousand seven hundred fifty. So that's, that's over above the fifty-eight thousand. And again, the other bid was forty-nine thousand, and he had cement siding, we reduced the quote by fifteen hundred dollars.
He must be using like a nice, like a Western red or something for his clapboards.
I, I don't know. I specified cedar.
Yeah, yeah.
Stained or painted?
Primed, primed painted.
Yeah.
Primed painted, same thing with the trim.
To me, the side, I mean, again, if the siding holds up, if it's a reputable material, that's not as important to me as the look of the two roofs matching, because when you come up on the road and you see the buildings from the side.
I get you.
That to me is, is more important visually, and I think would be to the HDC if, even though they didn't weigh in.
Sam Lake currently?
Slate.
No, 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 siding, it's clapboards, isn't it?
Clap, well, it shakes, cedar shakes on three sides, the, the rear gable, the two sides, and then the front is clapboards above the garage door.
Okay.
Yeah, so the peak is clapboards, and same thing on the back, the peak is painting above the, the level of the, of the garage, of the drip edge, is clapboards, the lower part, all lower parts are shakes.
Okay. And that's the look we're going for?
That, that was why I specified was replace at in kind. So cedar shakes, primed and painted, and then clapboards, primed and painted. And then rebuild the door, the sliding garage door, and then the interior work would be all insulation and everything, all that.
This is the silliest little detail, but I'm assuming both of them could deal with a little bit of that tiny bit of gingerbreading on me.
Yeah, and I did, when I met with both of them, when they did their walkthroughs, I said, in those,
Yeah.
if you can't save them, they have to be replicated.
Okay, perfect.
Now the corbels on each, on each corner, yeah.
Which contractor said they would rebuild the sliding door? Didn't one of them say, I don't have it in front of me?
Galatas specified what he would do and how would he do it. In the scope, it says it would, would be rebuilt.
Okay. And did you want to give your timetable for estimated town completion?
Galatas said. Job would take about a month to complete, and we could figure out the detailed deposit at that time. I did let both of them know that interior work could not begin until after the first of August, but exterior work could be done anytime.
Yeah.
Did we get the HDC postback yet?
I did get one. Seven thousand five hundred dollars. Of whole energy products, they're the ones that installed the, one down at the Historical Society.
So if you went with the electrician at seventy-nine for that electrician who was in a bigger trench, seventy-nine, seventy-five, so you're at sixteen, we'll call it. So we still stay in budget, regardless of which contractor.
Well, trust them with six thousand.
Six thousand, okay.
Yeah.
So we stay within budget even if we did have to worry about abatement from lead or anything like that?
We'd still have some wiggle room. We have some wiggle, yeah.
Good.
And Galatas said he would take the lead test to become an abater if there is lead?
He said that. He didn't address that, so.
Yeah, his proposal is just so much more complete, that's why I feel more comfortable with it. Regardless of reputation, I think the presentation is important.
If lead certification is needed, I will sign up for the eight-hour class and take the class and get my certificate so you guys don't have to worry about hiring another company to do the demo. I'm not certified at the moment, but I'm certified if you decide to hire me, I'll give my certification. I did ask the other contractor if he's certified, and he is.
Okay.
And he's tendered it to you?
Yeah.
I mean, that's, if he's lead certified, that's a big step up, because now you're not waiting for the class to cycle through, he can already handle it.
He can't do anything until after the fair anyway, right, most of it, so.
Yeah.
No, that's just, that's, that's my vote, you guys, you guys are the deciders.
I mean, for me, I, price is a price, you know, you can, I can charge one number and Scott can charge one number. Doesn't mean because he's cheaper, he's better, it doesn't mean because I'm more expensive, I'm better. I like the fact of having a little bit of.
Wiggle room.
With that ten thousand dollar difference, so if there is lead, or if there is more wrong with that building than meets the eye, which is probably a pretty good assumption, we've got a little bit to play with, and it doesn't prevent us potentially if you happen to stop the project in its tracks and ask for more money later.
Never forgetting that another amount of money comes out of the trust the following year.
But we'd have to ask to use it again, correct?
Yeah.
Another war on it.
But it needs to be used a second half of the year.
Right, 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 but I mean, just for the sake of pumping through it. You know, personally, I know your contractor, I'm not familiar with him.
Yeah, I'm not either, so.
I mean, in Beth's, I mean, it was a much better presentation, I do enjoy seeing what's being used in, you know, I love that. Because I like to know what products are being used and how they're being used, you know, for cost benefit purposes.
And I think if you're going for that kind of job for that kind of money and put that kind of effort into it, to me, gets the reward, but.
But the other contractor also worked with another town municipal, so. So the guy's looking in the big box.
This is why we're gonna take the big box, this, I don't think this is why.
I might be more apt to go with the gentleman from Boscoon, just due to the fact that it gives us a little bit of budgetary flexibility. Not knowing Adam, you know, not knowing either one from personal, I don't want to do it, you know.
Remember, we're not required to go for the little bit, but we're still even with that, within, either with either one.
I think with both, we will be, either one, well, with Galatas will be close.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because there might be the outcharge potential deciding the differences in siding, if he has to take his lead tests, and then the big make. That's really the big dangling carrot for me is the fact he's already lead certified. You don't, you don't get a lot of guys with lead certified anymore, and that's, that's a pretty nice thing to have. Especially because it won't hold up the process if it is lead positive.
I think you sound like you've decided.
I mean, in my head, I think, yeah. Who's the second contractor?
It's Shaker Heights.
I made this decision for you.
The guy's name is Dan Ralway.
Yeah. Ten thousand dollars cheaper?
Mm-hmm.
Well, that does.
He has, he has bid price prospect sheet with thirty-year asphalt shingle, the roof, cedar siding and shingles, electrical and HVAC by others, forty-nine thousand, cement siding reduced the quote by fifteen hundred dollars. Again, the cement is, is only the clapboards, I'm not sure like Galatas, the, the cement is so much more. I'm, I'm wondering if he mistook the, that it would be all cement siding.
Right.
Because it's actually just, the only clapboards would be the peak on, over the garage door and the peak on the back side. So that, that may be a mistake, but that was an option he gave.
That eighteen thousand was an option, I, I can't.
Well, he said in his bid, he told me how many, what the cost per square foot was. Hardy board cement is between fifteen and twenty dollars a square foot. These prices.
Well, it's things with clapboards, if there's damage, rod, you pop it out and you replace it.
Hardy board is not that easy.
Right, yeah. So long-term maintenance, wood is good.
Well, and I, I guess I look at it as we have a fairly secure income for work on the property, so we have to paint, we're gonna have to paint the trim on the town office at some point, because that's wood trim. It's cement siding, but it's wood trim, so we're gonna have to paint, scrape and paint that, that trim at some point. So we say, okay, well, you know, this year we're gonna do the town office, and next year we're gonna do the garage.
Does that, those costs include painting?
Yeah.
Okay. I just.
Yep, primed and painted, everything is primed and painted, interior, exterior.
Does it change the, what would it change, these, the quote from the gentleman in Boscoon if we said instead of architectural shingles, the, the, the faux slate?
I don't know.
That would be the only.
I, well, um.
Does it say the difference in the two prices?
Yeah, the Galatas said it was a eighty-five hundred dollar.
Difference.
Difference.
All right.
So I imagine it would be close.
So if we took the quote that's six thousand, uh, ten thousand dollars less, but wanted the slate roof, it would actually be more like two thousand dollar difference?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Right.
So.
Yeah, it's not cheap.
No, so I think they're, they're closer than we might think depending on what we choose.
Right.
Because the, the, the Galatas would also be less if we went with the shingles.
Right.
Oh, no, he would be, no, he would be more.
No, 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 that would be.
He's worried he's at.
He would be more, he's worried that, oh, okay.
Yeah.
So they're still ten thousand.
They're still, they're still eighty-five hundred dollar difference.
All right, I'm gonna agree with Calvin, I think ten thousand is a significant enough sum, but.
I would hold my line.
Hold your line.
But that's all right.
You're allowed. All right.
Can you decide on the electrician?
Oh, yeah, you said trusted for the electrician, right?
Yes.
And I said trusted it.
Yeah.
So I think trench, trench does him differently, has me to sway.
Do, anything else we need to do with that?
Yeah. Uh, nope.
Okay.
Nope.
You gotta shut them, and have you get that plant out in front, in front of the Sam Lake House, jeez them.
All right, so we're at code of conduct update.
I didn't make the draft, so I think we can just skip that.
All right.
That works for me.
All right, discontinue the tricentennial committee.
Um, the only reason I bring that up is it's kind of a technicality I keep stumbling across, that we originally had it as a select board committee, and we appointed people. But once they became a subcommittee of the Historical Society, which is a citizens committee, not an appointed town committee, we just need to.
I think you're on to a better.
They're getting silly over there.
Sorry, it's all right, I know it is getting lit.
So.
So we're going to discontinue the tricentennial committee, which I think is.
As formed by the select board.
As formed by, correct, as formed by the.
And recognize them as a subcommittee of the Historical Society.
Why don't you make a motion?
I will, I recommend that we discontinue the historic, the tricentennial committee as originally formed by the select board and recognize it as a subcommittee of the Historical Society.
A second motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would also say for future reference, because Kent and I looked at the town report, and it's confusing to me to figure out which are appointed, which are elected anyway. But then something like the Historical Society is really neither. They are, they are a citizens committee, and I think they should be listed as such and not.
I got you.
Yeah. And it might be the same is true again with something like the solid waste committee, which is also not appointed or whatever, they are volunteers and they kind of, we may have to decide about that.
Well, we appoint them.
We appoint.
Solid Waste Committee is appointed.
No, the, I meant Treasure House.
Oh, 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 that's a whole other can of worms.
Treasure House is another, that's another can of worms. But I'm trying to think of who else would be a, oh, like the, we would list the Friends of Canterbury Center in here, would we? But the Historical Society is, and I think they should just be made clear what they are. So that, I'm not confused in future, that's my only saying on that.
All right, donation to Canterbury Newsletter.
Yes, we brought it up in a select board meeting in 2024 on November 4th. Kent suggested that we make a suggestion, a suggestion, a donation to the newsletter in honor of Mark Travis. We all said yes, and then we didn't do it. So I think we should. Um, the library gives three hundred and fifty bucks a year to the newsletter. I don't know if that's what we want to do, there's a miscellaneous line in the, in the tent, in the budget that's, what did we say, there's like, what, a hundred dollars, no, a thousand dollars in it?
No, a hundred dollars.
Hundred dollars in it, and last year we ended up spending like twenty-five hundred dollars over it. But, um.
That was because we, we had a couple of employees that had overpaid on healthcare, so we had to reimburse them.
Right.
And, and we had to find someplace that they're gone, so we took it home to the.
So I don't know, it's based, it's six hundred bucks to print an issue, so I don't know if we just want to take care of the printing for one month in honor of Mark Travis. That would be my recommendation if we can afford it.
Gotcha.
Or whatever, one month, I can look up the precise amount of the printing for one month.
Going with a bottom-line budget, we can move things. We've saved salaries so far for one full-time position at the police department and one full-time position at the transfer station, so I think we can afford that. Only someone would make a motion.
I motion that the Board of Selectmen make in honor of Mark Travis a donation to the Canterbury Community Newsletter in the amount of one month's printing costs.
I think you're gonna put a dollar in.
Oh.
Six hundred bucks, could you say?
Yeah, it's six hundred.
Okay, let's make it six hundred.
Okay.
All right, I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I'll send a letter to Fred.
Thank you for catching that.
Yeah.
I have a couple of other things, sorry.
Sorry. I knew it was gonna be a long night when I got the agenda, so.
If you're excited energy.
Oh, yeah.
I think I sent you guys an email from Beth, you should recommend it against signing up.
You did. Yeah.
The other Beth.
Beth McGuinn.
Beth McGuinn.
Yes, yeah, sorry.
That's all right.
So I just need your okay to contact them and say thank you, but no thank you.
Yeah, I said it on the meeting, it's, it's very, it's not, to me, it was not compelling reason for us to, to go.
And I, I think Beth is kind of our resident expert on all things.
Well, all her points, if you read her email, are very well reasoned, and she had the numbers to back them up.
I, I was especially interested where she said we may not even be eligible, because we have some systems already in place.
Yeah, that was the big thing. Because we already have solar.
Yeah.
So it makes sense to them, so.
Would you ask, or would you ask?
I, I was, I was, I think I'm going to, yeah.
Just say, are you actually aware?
Yep.
Yeah, that's a very, would be an interesting question to, to ask.
And, and one last one, just a quick update on three sixty-seven Shaker Road.
Yeah.
Uh, we received, our attorney received some correspondence from the manager there, and they feel they are not in violation of the Solene.
Does that individual still remain there then?
So that, I don't know if you saw, it was on channel nine and in the car monitor about that individual.
Yeah.
Um, they were trying to get his bail conditions changed, and the judge refused, so today was his last scheduled day there. But I am gonna call, the attorney asked me to call him tomorrow and talk to him about it. So we will continue pushing the, I guess, their, their letter of compliance with the town that we feel that they were in violation and continue along that, that line. I think, you know, I don't know, we'll see where we go, and maybe, this may be something that the Plating Board may, Plating Board has the ability to revoke their special exception, so.
And this has not come up before the Plating Board yet.
It has not.
Yeah.
I think it's important to pursue because, just because that individual is not there as of tomorrow, it could easily happen.
And speaking with the police chief, that was. And speaking with the police chief, that was his take on it is. Um that doesn't mean that tomorrow somebody else might correct, be there.
I I think he's absolutely right, yeah.
If 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 the uh the property owner doesn't find it's a violation, there's no reason why they wouldn't do it again. But we think it's a problem, so.
Yes, I agree, yeah.
Yeah.
Um and last but not least, uh we have on our agenda and. This is more or less a a business, a kind of a cleanup type thing. We have administrative, we have appointments, we have new business, we have old business, I've had a suggestion to put committee reports from selectmen.
Yeah.
Yes, please.
Yeah.
So uh we will include that on our next agenda.
Very good.
Uh in there, so if if you have a report from the committees that you attend, um that would probably be the time to bring it up.
Yeah.
Unless it's brought up some other other way during the night.
Right. I think that's.
And that, will will that be on the same night, like tonight, the first uh meeting of the uh, or the one where the department heads come in?
I think we would make it on the first meeting, because the nights where the department heads come in tend to be longer.
Not that, the first meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
The three hour mark almost right now, so.
Okay.
Yeah, plus with the the way that like HDC doesn't meet till the last week of the month after this meeting.
It it and it won't prevent you if there's something important that comes up.
Yeah, yeah.
I need it to just bring it up at the regular select meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, your big business or I suppose whatever you want, a select person, that's your prerogative.
Okay, well, I think I think it's really important to, um I mean, I found it very helpful to be on a number of committees and hear what they have to say and then. And they found it helpful for me to be able to say to them, but I think the information coming this way.
Gotta come there and that was where.
And I think that's where we run into problems.
I, so they agree with that.
Yes. And before we close, I would like to say personal thank you to Ken for try to pursuing the Cushman Elm. And making sure that the Cushman Elm and the center will be attended to.
Cool.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Two minor things, these are related, I'll be going to the school board meeting first week in June in Canterbury.
No. Yeah.
And hopefully only one more meeting after this happens to be at six and I'll be free on Monday, it's back in five, so, yeah, just.
Yeah, just let us know, yeah, let us know.
It's coming to it, I guess.
No, and and I will be gone uh June.
Fourth, sixth.
Yeah.
Fourth through to sixth, Cal's Cal's got it already?
Thank you.
June fourth through to sixth.
I checked with my staff first to make sure it was okay.
Yeah. I got you.
That doesn't mean we can't text you.
No, sir, sorry.
Right. And I hate to do this.
There's better service up there than there is here.
I promised to have us out by nine, but I I need us to adjourn and do a good session, I'm not mad at it, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. Edgar, thank you for several things, including the video, but thank you for the, potentially anyway, the C C N H stuff, so. 'Cause that is important.
Edgar, I got your, I know I got your email address, but.
So Scott is making a motion, so we can.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes, yes, sorry, Scott is making a motion to.
I need a second.
Do you need to um say precisely from the.
For personnel.
Yeah, it's a personnel.
Seconded.
Alloons in favor?
Aye. Thank you, Edgar.
Alright, thank you.
Good night.
Thank you, mate.